Hey everyone, thank you all so very much for joining us. This is VTV, this is the time, it's 7:02, roll call please. Okay, Simmons.
President.
Nelson.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Blackman.
Here.
Paredes.
Here.
Huckabee.
Here.
Ford. Here and we are all here today. Here is absolutely important. Uh, first item on the agenda. There are audience comments and uh, there's no audience members who have signed up. Going once, going twice. Okay. And we will move to item number three on our agenda. Student recognition and presentation. Parker, Chess Team.
Welcome. Bill Nicholson up to share a couple of comments about the Chess Team. We're so happy that a number of them could come tonight to be recognized. We'll identify their names in just a minute, but would like to share some information that'd be fantastic.
Well, the team, the students came well prepared from elementary, ready to play chess. They did very well this season. Um, are doing our regional conference, seventh grade one. Um, and during our, we went to, we went to state and we had three of our students come back with medals. Jack Pirros, um, Joseph Thomas and Bilal Muhammad. Um, but they did very well this season. Thank you.
So we have the certificates. We want to recognize all the students on the Chess Team, we'll read their names, you can just hold on for now. Um, and from sixth grade, they have Osielis, Jack Pirros, Xavier White, Kai Scott, Kendall Lavin. Seventh grade, Armon Riggins, Nicholas Haywood, Isaiah Joyner, Quillan Hill, Helena Lavin, Luke Griggs, Jaylen Jackson, Bilal Muhammad, Rose Marie Garcia. And then eighth grade, Micah Thomas, Joseph Thomas, Michael Bell, Jocelyn Ranty, Sterling Shuckert, and Theodas Lanfair. The students who participated in the regional conference, Jack Pirros, Xavier White, Kendall Lavin, Micah Thomas, Jocelyn Ranty. The seventh graders that participated received a first for regional conference. Bilal Muhammad, Armon Riggins, Luke Griggs, Quillan Hill, Helena Lavin. And then the students who participated in the state conference in Peoria, Illinois. Armon Riggins, Jack Pirros, who also received the bronze medal. Isaiah Joyner, Xavier White, Kai Scott, Kendall Lavin, Luke Griggs, Quillan Hill, Nicholas Haywood, Helena Lavin, Bilal Muhammad, who received the bronze medal. Micah Bell and Joseph Thomas, who also received the bronze medal. Congratulations to all of them.
Nice job.
And then we also have Dr. Wa. Recognizing, uh, this is Maggie Backus, Josie Backus, and Judy Kubus for all their hard work in planning kindness week at Western Avenue. And we're going to show the short video after Dr. Jacob's lecture, a couple comments.
Hi, everybody. How's everyone doing tonight? So the Culture Be Kind Challenge was proposed by Maggie Backus and planned in conjunction with Mrs. Kubus and a couple of students from HF High School. Coming from a district where a lot of my high school students visit their elementary schools where they had grown up because many of them were closed. I think for me, seeing the HF students come back to Western where they had grown up was such an incredible experience, really eye-opening experience, another experience that I definitely don't take for granted. The articulation that we're trying to build and collaboration between elementary and middle and up to high school is something that I feel is very important and very much needed. This year kindness week fell the week before spring break. So I'm sure all the educators that are here know what kind of a week that could be. But our week at Western was pretty amazing and a lot of it had to do with the work and the effort that was put in by Mrs. Kubus and the high school students to plan all of the activities for our children. So we had so many things happening and then on Friday, we had about 50 students from HF come and go to all of our classrooms to read kindness book. And then our students made these individual quilt pieces that the students, the high school students put up all through our main hall. They stayed for lunch, they played with their kids at recess. And so many of them former high school students. So it was really fun because a lot of our veteran teachers who have been in the building, you know, 20 plus years, they've taught these kids and now they're seeing them come back. So that was a memory in and of itself. Um, so this video was put together by the HF students, it's actually put together by Julie. And we wanted to share it with all of you, just to kind of show you, it's less than two minutes. Um, but just to show you kind of how our day was and it's truly a date to remember. And then I have a card that I guess I'll be sending, I don't know how, it's pretty big. But this was signed by most of our kids, four of the kids at HF for coming. So, thank you.
On March 17th, NHS volunteers went to Western Avenue Elementary School to help push toward the school's kindness week. Principal Dr. D headed the program and explains why kindness is so important to promote in schools.
It's our hope that kindness week just isn't Monday through Friday of this week. It's something that we can maintain and pull from for the rest of the school year. Just because it's so important for our kids to engage with each other that way, to engage with our staff and our teachers that way. And it's something that we really prioritize at our building.
We talked to the volunteers and the elementary school kids about their experience.
So today, we're here just working with kids and teaching them how to be kind because I think kindness is another valuable lesson for, I'm not sure, because I think today's school systems, we often overvalue academics, arts and arts. Overall, it's good to teach kids how to just kind of be kind and just be themselves and that is enough.
It should be something you do every day without somebody not telling you it, that that'll make people feel happy. Care for someone else.
If you want to help your heart and you see trash, you can take it off and clean it up. Doing something for others that will make others feel much, much better and that will also make you feel better.
Overall, both the students and the volunteers left Western Avenue with a new meaning of kindness. The Culture Be Kind Program will hopefully be implemented in other elementary schools around the area. For VTV, this is Josie Backus.
Culture Be Kind!
Certainly very thankful, not only to our board, also the staff, because Western Avenue, all of our buildings are focused on kindness week. We certainly took advantage of it over the course of that, we did all our buildings and we're very thankful to the staff members.
Um, okay, so is there a plan to do this in the, I mean, I think it's phenomenal job. It's awesome, this little short video, it's gonna be viral. Seriously, you should post it somewhere. But is there a plan to do this throughout the rest of the district? And it's awesome, awesome.
Uh, no, and I think what we can do next year is advertise it a little bit more, see if we can expand the offerings and the opportunities to engage our parents and community because I know that students are involved all over the district.
Right, is there anything else on the Culture Be Kind? Okay, well, that's item on the agenda, our superintendent's report.
Sure, well, kind of keeping with the connection to the community and our schools, it was great to see a number of students and staff members and board members at the Flossmore Baseball Parade at this weekend. It was great to see the kids in their uniforms and the dogs and the donuts and all of the, all the great. Really a lot of camaraderie over Western and uh, and I think it was just a really good example of supporting the students and really just a fun time at school, not being at school. So certainly thank you for the invite to attend that. I was very glad to be there with my family. As you know, we're interviewing for a couple of hydro ball positions. For our communications manager position, we will interview the final candidates for round one tomorrow at Home Depot. We had a lead applicant, he was very, very qualified. We want to make sure we fit into that process as well. So we'll have round one, we'll finish round one tomorrow, round two will be held on Friday, May 4. We're excited to have our candidates back for round two, they have their own principal interviews on Wednesday, April 25. A good thank you to all the staff members and parents who joined us for round one last week. I know it's tough to take almost a full day out of your classrooms or off of work just to join us in that process. But I think we have solid candidates going for round two. We're really excited about bringing a final candidate to the board for recommendation on May 14. This week seems to be the week of intergovernmental meetings, we have at least two. So we are planning with our neighbors, as I mentioned, Wednesday we're meeting with representatives from the village, library, and park district to discuss after-school opportunities for our middle school children. We all see an opportunity to provide engaging activities for all the kids and we're committed to working together on a particular issue and create a better situation for everyone. Second, intergovernmental meeting of the week, the local school districts are having a meeting this Thursday at Brookwood School District, which is in Conwood. At that time, we'll continue to discuss and review that of 27 or 2017, 2018. We'll look at our plans for 18, 19. We've identified the places where we can work together, train together, discuss content and topics that are important to all of us and creates economies of scale. We really do have some strong relationships with our local governments and we'll certainly continue to leverage those connections for the benefit of our community. That's it.
Any questions or comments? Do you expect to have the, the, uh, committee, communications person?
I would, well, I would, after we get through round one, we'll identify the candidates for round two. We immediately start checking references at that one. So then when we get to round two, if we can meet all of our expectations, we can move forward with the higher process.
Do you know how many people apply?
I don't, but I can find out.
Yes, I'm just curious, I mean, I, I think it's an attractive job. It's a very rare opportunity. So I'm imagining a lot of local people probably apply, right? This is not, this is not an opportunity that comes around. So how awesome is it to be able to walk to work every day? I'm sure that's a lot of people were thinking, so I'm just curious to see how much activity we generated with the effort.
I would say that conservatively, Alison from the judge personally screened 15 to 20 people with phone interviews to get to round one. So I'm saying round one, but officially it's round two. A number of really qualified people from the Flossmore, Illinois area. And we got just very strong candidates with a lot of experience in corporate communications, people, people who do a lot of PR and marketing work, work for firms in Washington DC from here. And it's, it was very impressive. And they showed up in person the way that they look up here. They looked great and we certainly thought that people had the experiences that would lead them to be successful. And when they showed up, they certainly demonstrated that. So we're excited to meet with the last two candidates tomorrow and then to get to round two of the week.
Okay, thank you. Next item, committee report, committee engagement, please.
Just a reminder that we have a board engagement meeting on May 2nd. That's at 6:30 at Serena Hills, followed by our next dessert with D161 on May 7th at 8:00 in the morning at Home Depot. We'll put it out on Facebook, we'll send out a reminder to our families. The next dessert with D161 will focus on summer learning opportunities. We'll hit summer school again, share some reading information, really just focus on providing that summer slide.
We have a nice, healthy list of discussion items that are next, right? So on the agenda. So first item, make more topics.
Can I maybe share the topics for the following meeting? This time is no different, just want to make sure that we capture all of the, as many of the items as possible. This list is not exhaustive, but it gives us a guide that we could use as we make the agendas for May 14th and May 29th.
Do you have any questions or anything missing? Next item, equity.
Sure, so this topic is for board discussion specifically. Back in February, Mrs. Horst and I had an opportunity to visit a couple of local school districts. We visited River Forest District 90 and we went with the board president and Oak Park District 97 just to talk specifically about the work that they're doing around equity in their school districts. And out of that, out of those two meetings and out of other conversations around how we're serving students in our district, the opportunity to create a board committee focused particularly on equity came up. So discussion tonight is, is there an opportunity to move forward with a committee focused around this? Again, some sort of working title could be a Flossmore Equity and Inclusion Committee. In your report, it identifies what that group breakdown could look like, attempted to schedule for meetings. And we did attach an article that was most recently published in the Illinois School Board Journal around the topic. And the focus really is on providing great opportunities for all kids. Equity means receiving what everybody needs to move forward. Not the same thing, because they don't know that it's the same thing in a particular buildings or for a particular student. But it's being very purposeful about the decisions that we make from a finance point of view, from a curriculum point of view, from a staff point of view, et cetera, to make sure we provide great opportunities for kids.
Well, I mean, I think, I just want to add that this actually came about from the tri-conference. So it was one, I mean, so in the never to walk away from a tri-conference, especially since, you know, this is a cost community conference, you know, and many of us go here every year. And so ideally, you want to bring back ideas, best practices that we can think about and, and can I be incorporated here? So this was a panel that I, uh, went to that had this discussion. And so this is one of my takeaways, I think in terms of, we also generally did our list of sort of things that we want to follow up on. And so we did, we spent a morning meeting with the folks at River Forest and then went to lunch with Oak Park board member to really talk about what this is mean, how does this play out? Why is this good? How do we deal with challenges or pushback? And, you know, one of the interesting takeaways from my conversation with the River Forest folks is, you know, and he'll probably, they'll probably say this when they come and, uh, talk to us in, you know, later in the month. But one of the things, one of the interesting comments that they said is, you know, we actually don't need to do this. Right? Because they are a high-performing district and they have a very small percentage of students who are not where they should be, right? And so they could actually continue to go travel the course that they are and not recognize that there is a disparity that exists. But they also recognize that there is a disparity and closing that gap can only be good for the district as a whole. And so they want their district to continue to grow and improve. And it's really about making sure all, recognizing that we have diverse learners and also recognizing that we are committed to making sure all of our students have the right set of tools in their toolbox to be successful. And so calling it out this way is sort of our commitment of saying, you know, they're, we have, we, we recognize that there are disparities and how this is our way of trying to be more proactive about how we sort of start putting a weight on it, so.
One of the other pieces, it's really touched on this and it's really helped codify my own thinking as we, and I've put together plans for us to discuss that portrait of graduate and what that looks like. And I think these go hand in hand. It originally started as a separate item, but it can't exist without a clear vision and purpose for our work. And that's what we could be generating from these equity committee. So that we walk out with a clear commitment to a vision for the students that walk out of eighth grade. And an understanding of the efforts, the administrators' part, staff part, boardroom's part, to make sure that we can deliver on that commitment to our community and to those students. So we'll kind of intertwine both of those through this work, so it's not just one more committee and then sort of time crunch, but they certainly go hand in hand. Is this something that you include, you envision including members of the student body as well? You need some voices. The reason I'm asking is that, you know, as a high school teacher, in reading class, we have a lot of discussion and, um, you know, there's a lot of great, uh, perspective that comes from people who are just fresh from elementary education. And since, once they're out of it, they can all see it much better on the outside. And then sort of, um, get some sort of scope as to your experience and as they process, you know, what their experience was, you know, in many different facets. So I, moving forward on this, I would love to hear what students have to say.
That's actually a very, I mean, so we had not thought about, I mean, so we spent spring break brainstorming. I think, you know, all the stuff is still, you know, written on the whiteboard about brainstorming, about what this, what is it, how can we define it, how will we do this, what the baby steps look like. One of the things that we talked about was making sure it's a committee of committed individuals who really want to roll up their sleeves and, 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 and help us think through this. And so that's why we thought that we would have people sort of, sort of apply to answer some questions. But we certainly, I think, actually having students, you know, do the same thing we want to do. They might be actually really good ideas. And so we wanted to be very inclusive in terms of representation on the board. So we want teachers, we want administrators, we want community members and, you know, not students. I mean, so.
So when do you, when do you envision us might start to take, take some sort of corporal essence, you know, as opposed to theoretical desire to do? What's that kind of timeline that you'd like to see, okay, we can, we're gonna establish, let's establish an, you know, maybe perhaps in the same way the committee engagement committee went through process to, you know, gather an understanding of what's important to the community. How many, three, two-week cycles or one cycle we see? Just getting to the hardware, we have a direction and then maybe even a couple higher priority items we're gonna address and establish a, a mandate that we can work for. Are you ready? Yeah, I think that's a challenge that's left to the makeup of the team. And the reason I say that, there's a lot of conversation, professional development that has to start this process. I think there's a lot of reflection, there's a lot of identification of internal thoughts and connecting them with the reality of information of the data of the school district. I think it will take some time, really realistically, it could take, you know, several months before we're ready to start making any, the simplest of recommendations because of that path that has to be walked. And making sure that we're addressing the equity pieces equitably, meaning this is for everyone. And we have to be cognizant of the fact that as you start uncovering these rocks, there's, it will undoubtedly expose more work, way more questions than you started with originally. And that can confound the efforts of the committee. One of the best pieces of recommendation that we had from both districts, we need to be very clear about the purpose. And have very clear, concise, uh, goal statements right at the beginning of the formation of the committee so that as it moves forward, they have the power to say no. That we can look at this later or we can do this later. Our current purpose is to focus on these particular areas. So we'll try to learn from people who've done this work before us. Realistically, I would estimate the first, you know, two to four months, depending on how often we can meet. I respect primarily on data collection, professional development, reflection, discussion, and then the access of resources.
I think it'll be very interesting when the River Forest folks are here to hear their story and their timeline for all of this, because it wasn't something that happened overnight. And I think, um, uh, they were very thoughtful in their whole process. And so they didn't want to rush it, right? It's easy to create a committee like this and just have it be a catch-all to just throw a whole bunch of stuff. And so they didn't want to do that, that's not what we want to do either. And we want to be able to have dotted lines and straight lines to anything that comes out of this group in terms of what its impact is going to be on learning. And, you know, on learning and actually in every aspect of our strategic plan, right? I mean, so what, what impact does it have on culture and climate, what impact, so that's on technology. So all of these different things. And so we just want to, I think it makes sense for the district to take our time walking this walk so that we don't miss any steps.
Well, just even reading the, uh, the article that was attached to Core Docs and some of the other articles that they came in, um, this issue of the journal. Uh, I think that, you know, if you're looking at it from a teacher perspective and a parent perspective, there's so many things in here that just really have to do with, with our mission as a, as a school. And that really is to reach every kid. And I, I have spent most of my career working with kids who are really marginalized. Um, you know, I got my start in the June detention center, but I mean, where, you know, all those kids were castings. You know, they were really the holding tank until they were sentenced to lifelong imprisonment. Um, and, you know, but I think it does really be extreme. And at the same time, as we reminded the Lions Township, that even Lions Township, you know, they go through their own struggles, uh, my students murdered, uh, those, um, attorney people there and, you know, everyone had different needs, all the stuff. So I think that this is something that, um, wherever we are in our process, I think is gonna also serve as a great systemic reflection of how we as a district are serving our community and to really make the tiniest effort to reach and contribute to every single person within our community. This is not a foreign concept, I would say to this board and just observing the data of how you make decisions financially. With human resources, time resources, there has been a commitment to providing what's needed for buildings and for groups of students. So I don't expect major epiphanies because we are, we are making decisions very purposefully. The focus is on, you know, adding different lenses to our thought processes as we move forward so that we can be as effective as possible.
I also think it's, certainly not while I have been on the board, maybe you or not have a different experience. But I think this is a great opportunity to have a committee that consists of teachers, board members, community, you know, at the same time. I mean, so I, you know, I don't get the opportunity to interact and have, you know, very meaningful. I mean, so I, you know, I don't get the opportunity to interact and have, you know, very meaningful discussions very often with teachers outside of sort of, you know, if there's something going on, you know, a teacher in my team. So this is, I mean, somebody really thinking about being in this committee and somebody wanting to make sure all voices can be heard and have an opportunity to be a part of this. So, so I, I'm personally very excited. I think this is, we, I'm looking forward to some very healthy conversations. I'm looking forward to us thinking about how this will impact instruction and test scores and all that other crazy stuff. I'm also interested in thinking about how this will impact teachers and how we can better support our teachers going forward to make sure they have the right tools, make sure our administrators have the right tools. So I, I can't wait for, you know, us to roll this out and get responses from the community on our next question.
Plus, other questions?
Well, to Steve's point about student input, I think that's important. And I was just sitting here thinking like, and I know it's a little bit above level, but it may be not a bad idea to have someone of a specific age, someone maybe at the age of, but somebody who can come through the entire process, who can offer an input from that point to what Steve was saying, just a thought. Because I know on the college boards, they do have, they do have a student, you know, again, I know that's a higher, you know, but that could be beneficial.
I think you'll hear interesting ideas of how River Forest has also rolled this out, right? And so I know, apart, I know many, many communities, and I think even we, you know, the one book, one school, one book, one district, they've done round documentaries. So I think there's this opportunity for us to start having really interesting dialogue, not just from a district perspective, but as our district sits in, you know, the community that we, we serve. And this, this definitely falls in line, I think, with a lot of stuff that I know Losmore is doing as well.
Yeah, actually, part of our discussions between candidate interviews last week, identified that the goal to Losmore is going to start some formal discussions around equity and what that means from a village point. So we are dovetailing our work with other environmental resources. And again, it only benefits the community.
Any other questions to start on?
So our initial meeting would be May 17th. We'll send out a Google form to staff, community members, and parents to see if they feel should join. And they can have some feedback then. So we will try to get that out to everyone tomorrow. And then we'll let it sit for a week, maybe send a reminder, and then close that opportunity in about two weeks. Identifying the makeup of the team, as we said. So we'll have two board members, three administrators, five staff members, and then five community members. And then I have an asterisk here to identify if there's not, we have students as well, to have that perspective. So it's a very small, workable group. Part of the commitment, as Michelle mentioned, was having people commit to being there. Because this will be a roller sleeves type of committee. Our community engagement committee is a little looser. People can come and go and share feedback and ideas and concerns. But this one will be a heavy lift. And so we'll want to make sure that people understand what they're getting into. First meeting would be on May 17th.
Next item on the agenda, digital learning.
Just bringing back our Chromebook conversation. We have had a chance over the last couple of weeks to take a look at our devices and our potential implementation plan. Thank you to Tony, or other team, all this hardware negotiating. We've brought the price down considerably. And we're still recommending the HP 360 Flip, which offers students an opportunity to have a tablet experience and a full QWERTY keyboard experience. I think as students are consuming our recommended literacy program that we'll talk about tonight, a math program, textbooks at the middle school, the flexibility will serve them very well. You'll notice there's also a management license. That management license is for boot management. So that our tech department can address and manipulate all devices in groups as opposed to having to touch each device. It does bring us to a total cost for this purchase of $379,600.
Any questions? Comments?
Roughly, when you average out, how many you've done per to, in chunks here, but what's our annual cost for supporting all these devices?
Annual cost of supporting?
Buying, including the capital acquisitions.
I'm sorry, Kim, what did you say?
What are we spending on an annual basis on buying and replacing and maintaining and supporting all these devices?
There isn't really much above annual costs. It's just us refreshing everything every year.
Right. What's the average out to?
It's just manpower. So somewhere.
So I'm talking about, so this is $379,000. So this is three years of life. So it's like 100 a year of needs. But this isn't the only device in the difference. So I'm guessing our annual cost is 150 to 100?
No, I don't think it's that high. We can, we can bring in those specific numbers. So specifically for teacher classes, you know, with the MacBooks, if the battery goes, it's $90, right? So it's all in with cost of battery, getting it replaced, et cetera. You know, we can, we'll have for all these devices, best thing is we can do all the work ourselves, the screen costs, extra dollars, keyboard, et cetera.
Mr. Nelson, most of the stuff is all in-house, like with repairs and everything. So it's just.
I'm not really asking about repairs. Talking, the primary cost is the capital cost for renewal leases every two or three years. Since we started this program, we've spent a lot of hardware alone through our iPads and Chromebooks. We actually spent at least a million dollars last five years, maybe nine, five, somewhere around that range. And so what I'm really asking is the first half of a question, which is, is it really worth the cost? There's more than our Parker last week and, you know, how many, you know, every class we walked into, there's kids sitting there listening, earbuds in, the teacher's talking, and it's working. I just, I don't get it. You know, I don't see the value there. We're, we're going to be talking about saving costs and taking a look at our budget and trying to address problems like cheapen jazz. And, you know, what are we actually getting for the cost of at least two teachers a year? Or any other way you want to slice it. We're not getting a lot of improvement in student performance. We're not getting, we're not really teaching kids anything about technology by having these devices. We just kind of got fallen into the habit of like, well, we have them. And I, you know, it would be a big change to just kind of throw them all on the garbage. But they're not actually doing anything for any of our students. You know, and we have to start, you know, there's a number of items on the agenda today where the administration's asking for dollars for things. It's fine, but we can start finding things to get rid of. And unless someone can stand up and make a persuasive case that this is significantly improving our schools, why spend one? Why don't we just throw them out? Would it really be that disruptive if we picked up every one of these things and threw them in the trash? Because they're not, I don't see that. I haven't seen any single, in five or six years, a single assignment my kids brought home that were made better by adding a crappy Chromebook or a B2B pad with, you know, an eight-pound case. I'm asking, what am I missing?
I think our opportunity is to improve on the way that we deploy technology to extend learning. Like if it's Chromebook, like if it's MacBook, iPad, that's insignificant frankly. It's balancing instructional changes with the technology opportunities for students. And I would say that moving forward, you would notice a considerable difference in our focus on actual instruction. The point of having the flip, whether it's a tablet or whether it's, you know, using a typical computer, it's a bright student's choice. So as we work with, you know, teachers, their ability to generate more communication between kids and collaboration or to generate those high-level critical thinking skills that extend learning, that's where, that's where the devices can come in and act as an accelerant. I will tell you that I, we have a ways to go. I think we have some basic uses of technology in some areas and some stronger advanced uses. But I would tell you, we have an opportunity through the additional instructional coaches that we've added to have all of our instructional coaches that the building is focused on actual instruction. Using skills that can be accelerated with technology as opposed to a lot of the work in the past, based on my initial observations, over the last six months, have been more app-focused. We're going to do this app. We're going to do this extension as opposed to, we're going to work on this skill. These are a number of different ways you can extend that for yourself, but this is the skill that we'll bring. So I think that's, that's the change.
I appreciate the hopeful view, but that is the curse of all technology. Five years ago, when, when, you know, probably six years ago, when the general education iPad started becoming an issue, right? Textbook publishers were promising digital textbooks, and kids wouldn't have to carry books to schools. None of it, it's all vaporware. It's never happened. So, you know, even today, the publishers still aren't really supporting technology. It seems awfully optimistic that after five years of this industry, we're somehow going to do it better. Can I say something? I, I've had this conversation with my wife again. I've had this conversation again and again with my wife. And in many ways, I agree with what you're saying, absolutely. And, you know, I see this being in other schools and in different districts. And, you know, I think that ultimately it comes down to what is your value added for the money you're spending? And is it worth it? And, you know, this goes also to, okay, so you have this device. Why are you getting this? Are you getting this device and then figuring out what to do? Or do you have a very clear idea of how this will help accelerate the, what we were already doing? And I think, you know, looking at Jim Collins' Good to Great Model where he says that, you know, the technology itself does not replace the actual thing that you're trying to do, but it can accelerate that. So I think perhaps the question is having a clear idea of what are we accelerating? And how does this accelerate our teaching, our curriculum, and our mission and our vision? So I think maybe a good first step would be if we had a, you know, just a very honest assessment of, you know, A, how much it does cost to have these devices as opposed to not have them? And C, looking back, have, what have we added to the success of our students? Then have a very clear idea of where do we want to go from here? You know, I, I see a lot of things that Chromebooks can allow students to do that they wouldn't be able to do if they didn't have, which I find has a lot of value in it as a reading teacher. You know, but again, that's just a limited scope. I've also seen a lot of things I thought were a waste of time that, you know, various administrations and buildings I've worked with have said, okay, we'll do this. We'll even do this and we'll do this. So to your point, I think it might be useful to have, to understand like where we've been, how much we did spend, and where we would like to go and then have a clear rationale of why we would like to add these devices. Does that make sense?
I think it's not just about spending. I mean, it's actually just a very valid question. And, you know, so how have, what will we do different over the next six years? That could, where we could have a, a straight line, if it's possible, to improve. Like what if, how do we use these in the past and how do we plan to use them over the next few years that's, that's different? I mean, because honestly, I don't think that any college can speak very intelligently about how they actually have been used. I think teachers use them very differently, students use them very differently. Cameron, right, and some of the stuff that we saw, you know, what's happening in some of the classrooms. You know, we're like, no, this can't be the way they're supposed to be intended. I mean, so having a clear idea of where are we trying to go? And how will technology help get us there, I think would be a useful exercise. And, I mean, yes, cost certainly, you know, it's, can we project this cost out over the next five years as well? Like, you know, if we get new devices this year, we wouldn't need to get another. What's the refreshing period look like? Does that cost us? Oh, I know the other piece. The other piece I don't think we can be clear on is where does the guidance come from in terms of how teachers should be or could be if using technology to build new construction? Where does that come from? So are teachers sort of left off of their own devices on how they want to use these? Or is there more guidance that's given from somewhere around this, no, this is how it should be used? I just don't know the other thing.
So that would come from the building's resources and instructional coaches. And it has to be a, it can't be app-based. The goal is a digital experience that provides ubiquitous access to resources, increases the clarity and transparency of the educational process for our parents, provides consistency between our buildings. In order to accomplish that, we will need to move towards a functional and sophisticated learning management system. The vision would be to have courses that are consistent so that the secondary experience is the same classroom and it can be the same at Serene. So that a new teacher walking in can download the expectation for second grade math or literacy that we have determined is the most rigorous for all of our kids. And then at that point, the teachers can put their personal spin on it and supplement. We can generate consistency that way. Parents have an opportunity to log in, to check in on student work, to see teacher comments and feedback, and to connect with learning in ways we can't currently do that.
That's not true. I mean, before we had Chromebooks and all this stuff, I did write homework sheets and I could see that they're, not only that, but I had, I had it in essentially real time, maybe a few days after we got our assignments. We had zero free parents. I seen, I don't see any of my kids' assignments. I thought it was impossible to see my kids' assignments. And then what's worse is the time, for some reason, for grading and entering is longer. I, I just had, you know, one of my kids had, you know, I'm done with the second quarter, for all the second quarter homework out. A month later, the teacher tells me, oh, you need to turn one of those assignments and I forgot to grade it. And we're not going to have any more. It, it's, it's, you know, it takes weeks to get grades in the skyboard. And if they're just meaningless information, I can't get that grade. I have no idea what you're saying. Well, to that point, then, I think that is just, that's going back to your point about really principals, you know, have to create consistency. And part of that is expectation, you know, as a teacher, it's unfair to say, okay, that assignment a month ago, you need to turn that in. You know, because the lower you get in someone's age, the less likely that it's going to be found in his locker. But I think that, and I think that Director Smith's point has more to do with, you know, it can, it can have this result. It can get us where we prefer to be. However, it's also going to take a consistent practice of the human beings and users who are interacting in a way that makes that happen. But also, part of that is also communication of what parents want to see. I almost think it's better to some degree to have, like, every week there's an upload so that you're not forced into the helicopter position, you know, all day long. But, you know, again, it's, that's up to discussion. I think you're, why the board doesn't even allow the parents to see what your students are doing? Well, I think that's, so how are we going to magically add something? Technology doesn't keep providing.
Well, okay, so I think you're speaking about some inconsistencies. So.
No, it's about transparency.
Well, depending, depending on the kid, depending on the class, depending on the school, right? Well, for me, I have, I've seen quite a bit of what my kids have done. They pull out their iPad, they show me.
They pull out their iPad, they show me the paper that they're working on, and they tell me what the teacher said about it already. Like, I have that experience. I've also had my daughter work with two classmates on a project for the Music Black History Month project. The three of them worked in several different tools on their iPad together and created their project at home in the evening. So I have seen...
Well, you can stand over their shoulders and watch them work. But yes, you can be standing over their shoulders and watching them work, but they have their 12 pound iPad with them. You can't actually see the grade of work. If it gets turned in, what grade did you get on that assignment? We spent an hour working on it. What was your teacher's achievement? Would have been access to that.
Well, you're talking about tech, access in a digital format or a paper format? No. Well, then that's, so you're talking about inconsistencies. Because I do have that for some of my kids.
I've had one once in five years.
I've had a different experience. That's why I'm saying some of this is issues related to consistency. And not necessarily, we have to be careful with the size of inkbrush and paint. I think that, yes, there are some issues, but some of what you're describing is happening. So this is a matter of...
I've been told it's technically impossible. That, so when the kids are doing their assignments, they're turning in like Google Forms, Google Docs. And they're told repeatedly that there is no way for teachers to show the grade and feedback or send it back up. So, and that's what you're talking about.
I have a question. I think when I'm looking at, and I'm hearing everything, valid points across the board. We, if I recall correctly, as part of the registration process, there is a technology fee that is collected in your online library. And I think that because that again, with the different, is it, can we be melting that all into one team last year? So none of what is collected counts to offset any cost...
Everything that you do goes into the local pot and offsets. I mean, is it specifically earmarked that this money is going to this account number? No. Your fees go into your local contribution to your local source of funds. And then you make a certain investment or a certain amount of your own spending on. But it's not a specific one-to-one that collects technology, it goes directly to that ledger, it doesn't happen.
Well, we do have a line item on the registration process for technology, if I'm correct.
No, we have one line for student fees. As of last year, we melted it all together.
So that's what you're saying, that we've got to do it all together? But we, do we take into consideration technology or not?
Well, yeah, I mean, we take into consideration all the things that we spend on. So, you know, in that technology, it could be, you know, the inks for the cartridges for the printers, the paper that they use for printers, the licenses that have to be renewed for what they're using on the devices. All of those things are part parcel to what you contribute into the classrooms, just like a workbook, yes.
So the offsets are not as great or... I think that's what I'm trying to get to, is there's a portion that the parents, that we contribute to, even though we melted all of that in together? Is it a large enough portion to offset the cost of what we're speaking about right now? That's what I guess I'm asking, that's what I'm thinking about.
When you're speaking about this specific purchase, or when you're speaking about...
Technology. I'm talking about the technology.
Is it a significant offset? No.
I think the most beautiful thing about this is we set our... So if there's a lack of consistency with the work, there's a lack of consistency with the level of rigor of instruction. We can, all of us can directly support our teachers in moving towards that target at our end. So that comes through our strategic framework, that comes through the decisions we make at this level. I don't think anything can, that you said tonight was, those are all typical things that I would expect. And frankly, that I've delivered in previous one-to-one assistance. And so I would expect to do it with those again.
Any more discussion on that one?
I will have information on the questions asked tonight, we'll bring them back.
When do we refer to them?
If we want to have them by the start of school, we want to, we can check. The longer that we delay, you know, we'll get to the swing of all the districts placing networks.
So this, I see it slated for next month.
This will be the third, next month will be the third meeting, we'll be discussing.
I think as, as best, as much as possible now, as part of the questions that are being answered, I don't know if this is already captured, but I think, you know, it would be helpful to also hear how, you know, little things are thinking about using technology different over the next, I mean, who'd be...
I give you the, I'll bring you back the vision of where we would go. The LBC we have to consider is we're talking about a literacy program. That order is directly affected by this order. And will go up pending, or down, actually won't go down, but it will, can only go up because it's part of looking to access material digitally. We're bringing back the legacy orders on some of those books. So they have to go at some point hand in hand, otherwise we can't move forward effectively with literacy. And on some level, we don't have devices to do math tests next year. We don't have devices to do assessments next year. These would be staff devices as well, you know, exactly those things. So there's a number of moving parts. So provide as much information as possible through this week, and we can keep those conversations going. But ideally, if we could effectively answer these, I would like to bring back four actual ones, maybe.
We have a ballpark figure for how much the iPads cost per device? Do you remember what I'm saying?
Uh, they were like $5.99.
Okay. So, so are you going for, oh, I mean, I guess like today.
Those are new ones.
They're like $3.99.
$3.99?
Yeah. Sorry, we have more of these, please. I just feel a little more excited.
Okay, and then they have the same device that are usually using? Is it Apple's apples? Or is it, you know, sorry. You know, you think of that...
That was good, dude. I mean, is it the same? I mean, it's smaller, Apple W2 version.
Okay. All right.
About the same as I...
All right. I was curious. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, literacy program.
So our PLE Freedom Committee wrapped up our child process. The two PLE programs, we highlighted two really strong programs for several months. We collected feedback on standards and on their resources, discussed in this class, with the areas that we discussed before. Our committee, as we're discussing feedback from the committee, discussing with principals and with our coaches, and also with cabinet, and also with the parents who were able to visit at the materials this night. We decided to move forward with the Regent Great Deal from Pearson for K-5, as well as the High Directives Great Deal from R6 through B, also with Pearson. So the programs were aligned to each other through all last year with MAP. We sort of got lucky with Gertie and Zepia, their alignment is very tight. That was just sort of a great thing that happened for us. So we moved forward with Pearson, who does one program, or two programs that are aligned for K through B. Some of the strengths for these programs are teachers shared that they felt like the program provided multiple options for reteaching, which is really important for students who do not get the content for the first time. Multiple text options, both print and digital, so having access to an online thing of texts for parents and for students. As well as having hard copies of text materials, which we know is really important. And having lots of different text options, so plentiful resources for students to read and experience both fiction and nonfiction text. Our teachers share that likely the program will provide rigorous vocabulary instruction, which is really important. In a lot of our schools, it's a very scary lead. Also, strong writing conventions and writing process teaching across the board. There were some grade levels where we needed to be careful to make sure that we really pulled out the writing of the line best. We feel like moving forward, let's say, writing, a focus on writing next year. These resources would help us cross the board, provide that access to writing skills that we need. And just to add note, sixth grade grade program really supports the animation folks that we've been doing at the middle school level. We feel like we continue with that for next, moving forward in the next four years. Also, multiple options for formative assessments, so our teachers would be able to choose various options to know where students are, have access to those lessons digitally and also print. Teachers felt like the text was mostly diverse and exposed students to experiences that they would not necessarily have access to, and did that on a consistent basis, so throughout the grade levels, that would be helpful for them. And again, just stressing that with writing activities, also offer extension and stretch activities for students, so having the ability to differentiate with writing as a result of being... Looking ahead to professional development. We feel like the team at Pearson will be able to provide us with strong professional development to get us started, as well as throughout the school year. So we would follow the same model that we did this year, which we feel like worked well, providing some professional development for teachers who are able to attend, as well as utilizing our institute days that begin at this school year, we will have three. And two will be dedicated to, will be dedicated to English level arts. To really get our teachers started, and there are instructional coaches up to speed so that they will be able to support teachers. And then throughout the school year, providing ongoing professional development, both outside of the classroom and in the classroom, through our plus one university classes, as well as our professional, while we're pulling staffs out for the professional development like we did this year. We felt like our model for professional development with MAP this year worked well. Teachers felt like being able to get up to speed on the units when they're opening, and then being able to have time to reflect here for the next one, and being able to go over the top part. The costs that are in the one packet include all of the materials that we would need, as well as the professional development. So it works out to about 33 days of professional development, that would be one site. And that would be not pulling teachers out for 33 days, but pulling them out for some of those days, and pushing it to the classroom through the coaching support from the experts at Pearson to support teachers, as well as the training for our instructional coaches, so that they can be able to provide the homework as support when our facilities are not on our premises. Yes?
Is that 33 days, K through B, or is that like, you know, 15 days, K through 5, 18 days, 6 through 8? Is everybody getting the 33?
Yeah, so it's staggered. It's an even distribution for the days that are pulled out. So this year, we did half days, we pulled K through two teachers in the morning, and then pulled Richard five teachers in the afternoon. The coaching support also needs staggering, so the facilities will go into the classroom on staggered days. So everyone would get an even amount of professional development, and it's not every teacher being pulled out for all of these things.
So there would be a big impact on, kind of like flood of some, could place our teachers, uh, teachers are getting?
No, it would be the same as it was this year. And that's certainly a challenge that we tried to balance, making sure we can have to provide professional development, have to make sure that our teachers feel confident and comfortable with the content, and also meet our teachers in the classroom. So it would be about a day, not this week, experience this year. Some of the challenges that we know will need to be prepared for is, again, for our country teachers, they will be doing year two of MAP, as well as year one of PLE, so that's a lot of work and a lot of time commitment that we need to dedicate to that. For year two of MAP, we will be looking at pushing into the classroom more versus pulling teachers out, that they have one year of professional development under their belt, and one year of working with the MAP programs that we have. Facilities will take it to the next level by going into the classroom to support seeing the construction in action and helping to promote that way.
Okay, third question. I always ask this, is there, is there a parent training, either version of this, so that parents have a better sense of what the kids are doing, and how it can be best and different from what they've been doing in that situation?
Yes, so similarly to how we did MATTs this year, there will be several parent sessions that will be hosted throughout the school year. We're going to look at a few different options for that to get more virtual involvement incentive, and also actively doing some of those courses for parents digitally, so that parents who can't make it into sessions, can log in and participate, and then you can own back those.
Okay.
There's also, both programs, Regent and High Directives, have parent components. The parents have access to online texts, they can use it home as they wish. Similarly, to the way we did MAP, we would be able to attend home, parent leading letter with Regent, and some of those people need to create themselves. With our MAP program, they can prepackage, but we have found a lot of districts that are utilizing the main program that have already done that, that we can certainly make part of.
That's great. That probably, so another question, do we have, like, another district where we can say, would you kind of get like a big brother, big sister perspective on what is work all for them? So they can kind of always make some, you know, something for those?
Yes, we have three districts in our area that are utilizing the program. We will be trying to put that district in there that we, to see if we're bringing action toward their stumbling block. We'll be making that for sure.
I attended the session for parents in Regent, and kind of going back to what Cam said. They showed us a parent portal that they had that allowed us to see real-time data feedback on what your child did in school that day, submitted or from the assessment pool. Did we get everything?
Yes, we got everything. Yes, so that's part of the online, the portal is also part of the online text access for parents. So yes, everything that, the copy is there, including...
So that actually, the portal, a parent portal, it was amazing. It's actually a fantastic idea. I mean, I've actually been advocating for that at high school. Yeah. You think, you know, you don't know what's going on, you know, K through A. I mean, a high school, I can't, I can't see anything that my high schoolers do. Everything is in the Google, I mean, even the teacher's comments. I have to have my son pull up his account, open up the document, so I can read teacher comments. I mean, so nothing's printed, nothing's returned, it's very frustrating. So, yes, the parent portal is, is a parent-friendly, a parent-friendly way of, I mean, you need, want to know what your kids... I mean, so I actually have to schedule an appointment with teachers now, so that you, you know, please print this out for me, so that I can figure out how to support my children. I mean, so, sorry. You know what, Sid, if there are any more questions on literacy centers standing up, do you want to talk about course catalog?
Actually. Okay.
That's you. Yes. We'll come back to STEAM.
So we are doing a review of the Department of General High Course Catalog. Conversations around this started last school year, knowing that we wanted to add some additional courses to help improve opportunities for students and help stretch some students to standards and also just keep their interest and make sure that they're engaged in classes that are truly worth it for them. So the first course, I'm going to talk, this is a specific course, I'll just talk a little bit in general. We know that we have some things that we need to tighten up with our MAP courses and our MAP alignment. One of the things that we will be doing next year is removing our geometry, our honors geometry preschool course that is taught back to the high school, so our students will still have access to that course, but they will take the course at the high school. That will provide them with more time in terms of minutes in that course to really, really be able to focus on the difficult content of that course. We have been in conversations with HJ and it's totally possible and it's something that they're more than hoping to help us do. So we feel like that will also create some time in our schedule to be able to really make sure that we have enough MAP courses and that we have the right MAP courses. Our algebra honors one course is also that this whole course will remain at Parker. We will continue to offer that course, again, to any of our students who qualify for it. We also introduced the pre-algebra course last year as a, we started to see some students who were ready for algebra content but needed a little bit more time with the foundational skills and we've seen some good results for that course. So right now we're in the process of looking at how we want to expand that course, what students, what additional students need that course based on fifth grade or coming into sixth grade, who should be prepared in the next few months to be able to really identify what that course sequence will be. Additionally, on the ELA and social studies guide, we are planning on offering a humanities course, so this would be, again, something that we started in conversation with our ELA social studies team last year. We're just not able to get off that last year, but we feel like we are in a good place to move forward with it. So this would be a collaboration between our English language arts teachers and our social studies teachers to teach a higher level of course that exposes students to more complex texts and also helps them focus on some political and literature virtues of our times that, that our teachers feel strongly that a lot of our students would be able to handle. Generally, we would focus on students that are close to that ninetieth percentile and higher on MAP, of course, understanding that there may be other circumstances that would allow students to qualify for the course. But this will be a great collaboration between our social studies and the LA departments. Right now, based on our schedule, we would be able to offer this course at seventh grade because we do have that double block of time for, for English and then our time for social studies. We have the materials to be able to facilitate that course in combination with our current social studies materials as well as the extension and stretch activities in my perspectives that we'll be picking up as well as some of the work we've been doing with the College of Oregon area units, which we really, really have enjoyed working with at the elementary level to pull some of that material onto this course. Additionally, currently, we've been a little bit relative with our world language options at Parker. We teach the HJ honors foreign language courses and we feel like some of our students would benefit from having an introductory course that would help them get those foundational oral language skills as well as speaking skills in the world languages that are just not ready for that high school level of course but still need the exposure to get them ready for that course. So we have to be scheduled and the students to be able to provide that course, that introductory class for Spanish and French.
And would you agree with that start date?
That would be for seventh, seventh grade.
And then would that be a specific introductory course in, say, French or in, say, Spanish? It would not be?
No. Right, it wouldn't be combining the two languages, it would be separate and separate for, so introductory course for Spanish and English.
So if they take the introductory course in the seventh, then what will they take in eighth?
They would take the, oh, no, that was not the one course. They would take the, the other course, the honors course. With that course, especially at the seventh grade level, it also would inquire students to make some choices, so they might not be able to do the humanities course and foreign language course, so that's just something to figure out that making choices is something that we want our students to do authentically and based on their interest in doing these things. Last, we are looking to add the FUSE STEAM course. FUSE is a program from Northwestern that we've been doing a lot of work over the past two years with Northwestern University. It's a STEAM-based course that takes students through various projects, activities, electronics, robotics, fashion design, sound mixing, game mixing, there's a video game development model that they will go through, and it really helps students work in collaboration to complete projects, design projects, and persevere through projects that they generally would not take on in a regular class. This course would replace what we've been doing with computer class. We feel like it would be a good opportunity to add to our on-court rotation at Parker. So that's where this course would be in, schedule-wise, would be an option.
So students will have the option of this or the computer?
Paper.
Oh, paper.
So theoretically, you could take foreign language and take the new course because they don't turn out easy to access.
Sure.
Because there's no gating system, there's no task gating that course anymore?
No, no, it would be open, the modules are differentiated and they're designed so that students at different levels can collaborate around the same topic.
You're talking about the computer course, and I think we've been, before you joined us, I had, okay, talked about this, and I think it's important, our kids need to know how to type. And, you know, of course, I learned that in grammar school years ago and, you know, I went through it with both my children, finding and pecking and learning to type. Now, in that computer course, was that, were there skills that were leading towards keystrokes or?
Yeah.
We're talking about replacing that.
Yeah.
We're talking about going beginning that will aid in the young ones. They're going to be taught in the paper course way before they get to school, but...
So the best way to teach keyboarding is through embedded learning experiences in the classroom? And I think that's where this home book conversation is more wide-reaching than just experiences because those third grade students are expected to generate one whole page typed by the end of the year. That means they have to start learning keyboarding, keystrokes accurately, and some of them can grow up in first grade.
Right.
But unless you, of course, you're going to have to rest your lives.
Absolutely, that's why you have to be purposeful.
So when, and it doesn't have to be a portrait, I, you know, it's different. First person, good afternoon, and then figure out, when is that going to be?
It starts, you got to embed it into what they're doing. Ready Gen, which is a literacy program, is heavily focused on writing. Kids generate a ton of content through that program. It's an excellent opportunity as we're generating that content in clients to take a minute, oh, let's sit down, right, here, let's take five minutes, ten minutes per week, per day, et cetera, to focus on keyboarding. So you got, you have to embed it all.
I guess to that point, again, I'm not curriculum guy, but I, I think that, connecting to the points that I made, you know, there should be some sort of guidelines of, okay, we're going to, you're looking at this program, you're investing microtype or, you know, everyone's going to sign up a typingweb.com account for free or, you know, whatever it is. I think, and as we said earlier, there needs to be consistency and there needs to be a series of expectations.
It can't be on the responsibility of the teacher to figure all this stuff. It's, it's not fair to them.
That's definitely something to, to this point. Yeah, the students will be there, so typing papers for ELA class or taking up a project proposal for a FUSE class, yeah, the students will be there. We can definitely be more intentional about making sure systematic way we're teaching students how to do that. Thanks. That's definitely something.
Just want to understand the, the new courses. If a student selects the one language instead of the humanities, then they'll just do a traditional double block of ELA, correct? And at sixth grade, it's still a double block of ELA, correct?
Currently, we do not have a double block of ELA. You're saying the humanities course for sixth grade?
No, there's no humanities, the humanities course is just in seventh grade, right?
Right. I'm sorry, you're talking about right now or?
Right now or next year. Any, what, what, what do you, at sixth grade, there'll be a double block of ELA, correct? Isn't that what they, isn't that what there is now? This doesn't impact this, right?
Right, you cannot, right, so the humanities course does not impact this.
Okay.
It would not change anything for the sixth grade schedule currently or for next year.
Okay.
And part of this discussion, if the board knows, we've engaged in discussions with the FBA to address the schedule, and we were not successful in making those changes. Middle school schedule is heavily bound by the contract, so there's not, really, there's not an opportunity to make any meaningful changes, either to promote teaming, to look at our blocks, to look at how we structure the day. So we'll keep working with them on those issues, but truly structural changes will have to wait until the contract has an opportunity.
What kinds of structural changes would be given as we're found with the contract?
The enrichment period is problematic, and part of, part of the issue with enrichment is that it really forces the hand on choices. So we don't have an opportunity during the day to really focus on social emotional relationships. If we're going to do it during enrichment, we have students who are pulled out to do interventions, to do other activities in the building, and a number of students who need to focus on their social emotional development, we'd be making that choice for them, social emotional development or literacy skills. Building in the teaming structure, there's, there's an opportunity to create groups of teachers who can work together for the benefit of students at Parker, and I think there is certain willingness to do that, there's just not, we have to create opportunities for them to get together and to have those conversations. Again, there's just, there are just scheduling challenges that go along with that. So advisory period, opportunities for students to connect with adults, we get into capturing kids' hearts a little bit later, that's really the focus in the crux of that program, creating opportunities to form those strong relationships. So those are just a few of the areas that we would look to address as far as the schedule's Once this is approved, we will produce graphics on all of these areas so that our parents can see a pathway through for all the different departments. We'll make sure that we broadcast that part while my thought, the way that I see it now passes, it becomes part of the student planner at the junior high, that way students can assesses about their classes, but also parents can be involved in that as well.
I think that's great. I think it'll be very important, visually, I think parents, I think it'll just work better visually, but, you know, it's helpful to see what the sequence looks like because if we can see the sequence, then we know in goal it is.
Yeah, actually, we'll see if we can put that together for the next part.
Yeah.
At least in draft form, if it makes visual changes.
All right, one last question. So this drives me nuts, right? So we have a stated goal, a stated goal in mind that algebra one is the standard for a grade. Do we call our algebra course honors course? Does that make any sense to me? How are we clearly communicating to parents that we actually make sure we call it honors? I don't think a lot of people, it's honors, I got, and that's not, that's not our goal of wanting to get, hope of our children, students through algebra one, different way than part of it.
Sure, I think part of the challenge is whenever we get into, we call this algebra of honors, it's the same issue with that geography course, we have, we have an issue where we're creating an unfair situation for our students, and we can't offer at this almost basic level the instructional time that the high school expects out of those courses. I think we can absolutely get to a point where we have algebra for all, which have to be careful with the vocabulary. We can have, you know, a teen algebra for all that's said, a full year course, a two year course, there's a number of different ways to do it. The focus will be on the expectation of that end of eighth grade year. So if we're expecting to have students test out of algebra for HF, that's a different target than just having algebra for all. So I think that's, that's a really good question, but what's the point? And what are we really trying to deliver through A3 algebra? So we can build it in. So what we'll bring back, as we mentioned, Sheldon, so we'll bring back the grade levels and the classes, and so we can see what that would look like as a student comes through, I think that'll help a lot. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will go back to I know the letter B, which is the same curriculum.
Sure, so we shared this information earlier in the year, right? We were getting started with STEAM discussions, and we just wanted to bring this back again for discussion before we bring it ultimately forth and through. But we are looking at creative learning systems, STEAM curriculum, the, all the students at Sreen Els who would have exposure and opportunity to work with these experiences, again, kindergarten through fifth grade, all students, no matter what class or set of experiences that they have, covers everything, circuitry, computer graphics, et cetera, robot, robotics, software engineering. STEAM program in action, a couple of different times, their visits to District 153, they're engaged, they are talking about learning in ways that it's really invigorating for the teacher in me to see children so excited to struggle with content. It's absolutely fantastic. All of these materials, obviously, we've run through the Sreen Els STEAM lab. In addition to all of the actual materials, there are three iPads that come with this purchase. They are not fully Android compatible, they have been creative learning system, and so they do recommend iPads to access the full aspect of some of their robotics software. We're really pushing that because that's unacceptable, 2018, then it only runs on iPad. But the cost first follows. The baseline learning environment with materials is ninety-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-three. The additional tech support, which is essentially, if we call, we could help right away, is two thousand dollars, in my experience, is absolutely worth it, looking at these types of purchases for a total cost of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Again, we would not make any expenditure until we received the money from Mr. Alan DeCastro, and we've already been pushed to, we're preparing to place the furniture order, just waiting on the receipt of those, which should be here at the moment, so we are full steam ahead. But we're really excited about, we're really excited about the opportunities here. It's a great curriculum, it is, it will provide everything we need to experience in the rigorous experience.
We still need a teacher.
We do. Position has been posted.
And remind us again, so the expectation is that this will be up and ready to go a little bit? And remind us again, so the expectation is that this will be up and ready to go a little bit, Gary, right? For the fall, this fall?
That's the projected timeline, yes.
And will our generous benefactor be here, or will be, are you planning some sort of ceremony, ribbon cutting, you know, some big, like, wonderful photo op?
Again, sharing the equity, we'd love to see everything happen at Serena. We know that we'll be a part of, we'll certainly see the benefits for every student within the district of this lab. So very excited about this opportunity.
We talked a little bit last meeting about construction bids that came in, went back up to bid. I thought of the idea and fairly confident we can get a significant portion of community out to the extent that it's feasible. As my good friend, he's early on.
So Frank was here to bring that conversation. It's always, it's always problematic. I think there's a great opportunity, Gary, and a lot of those are still waiting on any updated costs to come back. Is there a thought on how we would verify certifications and certificates of insurance, just how that would work?
It depends on the work that, you know, I guess it depends on where the bids and then where can we sell them again. You know, if I remember the construction plan, right, so the things, you know, there's a couple, hopefully, non-living laws that need to be removed, and then there's a module, right? So that stuff, putting these kind of tearing up the carpet, putting in the carpet, not rock science, assembling furniture. And it is probably quite a task, people from, help with this, would be excited to help with it.
I think once we get the next round back, I think we'll have a better idea.
Another option would be, we call American Dallas or the local community in the state of those and ask them to lean on American citizens to do a better job of it. Might be a whole company to go in and help out.
I think if there's a way to pull the community in to help in some part, you know, it could be a community day at Serena. And, you know, I think you might be overwhelmed with the support that you might have. People who want to kind of, I mean, so, you know, carrying a ton, I mean, you can figure out whatever tasks are appropriate. But I think, you know, if there's an opportunity to have a community day at Serena to allow us to come in and help, I think that would be a good idea. Anything else on STEAM? Okay, that's time on the agenda, just safety staffing.
So after the board meeting, you can say. Part of the conversation, community comments, will be focused on safety in general. This board report really identifies a few areas where we want to have our discussions around recommendations. There's an option that truly just represents a starting point for us to work. We currently have safety aids in all our buildings. A question about the safety aids and how they currently use. For example, at Parker Junior High, Mr. Cunningham was here in the back, dutifully makes sure that it's a safe environment. A wrapped room, all the people who come through, checking the licenses, making sure that our kids get delivered from A-J in an orderly fashion, and I'm seeing him in action, certainly thankful for his hard work. At the elementary schools, you could have a safety aid who does that, or who typically does more administrative type work. I think that's part of what we have to decide here is, do we want to bring some conformity and consistency to that safety aid job description? Because as I mentioned, right now, some of them are safety aids, and some of the safety aids are teaching intervention classes. It's, our principals, to their credit, are very creative when it comes to solving problems in their buildings. And I would not tell you today that the safety aids are being used inappropriately. If they're teaching intervention courses or helping out the office, it's because they had a need there to fill. Our question would be, as we're looking at school safety in general, do we want to generate consistency to deal with those issues? Or a lot of those safety aids used flexibly at the elementarys, specifically?
So I have a question. For the safety element, is it that we are worried against things that could happen from the outside in? Are we worried against things that could happen inside the building? Like, if like, exile or?
So I think that's part of the challenge here. So I would tell you that with, frankly, Mr. Cunningham being the sole exception, using the word safety aid does not generate any particular endorsements or credentials or training. So there's really not a focus to prevention of any dangerous behavior, either from coming in or from happening inside the building. I would tell you, the safety, the extent of the safety provided would be, you know, for example, at Serena Hills, there's safety aid, and parents come in, check the licenses, making sure that the right people are coming into the building. But I would call that the extent. If there was an issue, the safety aid position would not provide you either deterrent or asset to stop that situation.
Have you gotten any feedback from building levels about what their needs are? Or principals' recommendations for what they like, what they think would be most useful? You know, either, you know, looking at a longer view over the years or just looking at recent trends they have found to be more effective?
With regard to safety in general?
Yeah, regards of, you know, who is doing what job, what training they need, who should be standing in what positions, you know, what, you know, just what their feedback is to the bigger picture, sir.
I think we've had initial conversations, I think we'll probably have more. When it comes to safety and security in a school industry, really that policy should come from the board because you're making decisions that could affect a number of different pieces. So for example, as we get further in on security guards, security guards have no effect on this. Right? That's a firm value, firm belief. Because once you cross that line, you create other unintended consequences for students and for young boys and girls that we may not intend. So I think that that's where the larger discussions have to take place. I think we can, I feel like principals have the support that they need with the safety aid. Again, I'm not recommending a reduction there. We're calling them safety aids, and I think it gives people a false sense of security because the safety aspect of their job primarily consists of checking IDs. So they don't want us to think, oh, well, we have safety aids in the buildings and they're deterring or supporting, and...
Safety is the sign, is the right name. I guess it's a name that maybe had a different purpose at another time, because we need to change that.
Does it have a history on the safety aid position as to when they were created?
I have a fear of safety aid. Really good safety.
Yeah, so, right, it could be as simple as a name change.
I think it also brings a question, so what do, what are our needs? And I mean, I don't know what the definition of a safety aid is. I mean, and so we need to figure out what we mean by wanting a safety aid and what skills and, you know, what do we want this person to do?
Is there a job description that is the newest, or it's the highest?
Yeah.
And then is so, what is it and where is it?
And then is there different, from the middle school to the elementary schools?
Yeah.
Is there a difference?
Again, it depends on the purpose.
Right.
Right? If it is a staff member who is checking, students in, checking adults in as they enter the building, that can be handled by a number of, it's handled by every step of them. Some people handle it in the office, some people handle it with the quote-unquote safety aids. We didn't put that job description.
But right now in practice, the only thing that the safety aids are doing are scanning ones. Is that what you're talking, and then is whatever else?
No, the corporate experience commission drift, right? And that's a valid problem.
From a security standpoint, I would tell you that our, the safety aid at Parker was more ideal student safety side. The primary experience of the safety aid would be scanning IDs at the elementary level. And to Kim's point, that drift of purpose and job description, whether what we may have intended them to do has changed.
So if you hired someone just to scan IDs, right, any more person's going to be bored, right? And then you're going to start like, what are they going to do? And the principal would actually going to say, oh, let's do this, do that. And so it, I mean, it seems to me that we're going to, no one's proposed an idea that's going to make that happen. So I guess as far as the elementary schools go, what do the building principals want? If they want the safety of checking IDs, that their office staff, screen, other things, fine. But I think we've already established that we need to find additional tasks for the safety aid. I'm not personally opposed to that being our department office, but it may be different for a building. But I think part of the special also is, is not care ourselves, this is a security guard or any sort of deterrent to the problem at our schools. At Parker, if I understand correctly, the safety aid has a little more to do, right? So they're going to be monitoring passing periods and they're, you know, a little less mission drift maybe? Or is that the same problem?
No, I don't think so, I don't think so. And I think part of, one potential option here would be to look at the number of safety aids at Parker in relation to security guards in general, to generate the consistency, to really develop that clear focus. And again, every time I say the word safety aid, it clicks because I don't know if that's the right title in general.
How many safety aids do we have at Parker?
Right now, we just have Mr. Cunningham.
And then where are the other safety aids?
At the elementary rooms.
So we have a total of five safety aids?
We have a total of five, total.
So is there credentialing, is there credentialing involved in safety aid, becoming a safety aid?
No, in some of the, you know, Mr. Cunningham takes it upon himself to get other credentials, go through other courses, learn additional information. So again, depending on size, he saw a need, so he just goes with the position as opposed to us saying, these are the credentials for the safety aid in District 160.
So it seems to me like you have really sort of these all-purpose building aids. But then the other question is, do we feel like we need a security and safety guard at?
Before you answer that question, I would suggest that we suspend the recording of this discussion. I don't think we want our discussion to be security anymore.
Can you say what you're studying?
I would suggest we suspend the recording of our discussion on security, with talking security guards and security threats.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, that's, that's smart.
So feels a little bit more like this is a brainstorming session?
Yeah.
And so I'm not necessarily inclined to suspend video. But I'm also not sure that this is the best use of our time. We have an option here, it's not a recommendation.
But I wanted to ask a question before we continue. So I just want to make sure that I understand what's, what's before us and why it is before us. We have parents that, if there was a situation that part of our recall, correct me, where there was something that happened in the office that was a security concern. And so is adding a off-duty police officer, someone who has sworn powers to be able to do things, something to kind of address situations like that? Or somebody more serious jumps off, whether it's in or externally or internally? Is that, or is it being more uniformly set to how the districts, other districts or our other districts are handling their security or is it kind of a national?
So I would tell you that the way we handle security at Parker is not like, it's not like most districts. Most districts do not have security guards at their school. I can tell you that. Districts around us have security guards after school, not during the day. If we do decide to add an off-duty security officer or some sort of personnel like that, again, I cannot state, cannot overstate the importance of keeping them separate from any sort of student discipline process. Will never and can never intersect with student discipline. There will all would be, in the case of an emergency like the situations we had in the office, to provide support and an earlier police intervention than pulling the blue point, you know, poles or calling 911. So you can think of, the way that I consider this, think of the number of times we've called the police in a bullying, that is the type of situation where that person would intervene.
That's outside in. Why wouldn't we do it in every building with special on Parker?
Absolutely not.
It's not an option.
Right.
That's why I'm trying to wrestle, is this an option or a soft recommendation? What direction are we going?
I'm looking for more feedback, frankly. I think districts have responded differently to four different buildings. Parker, in the grand scheme of things, when you think of off-duty police coverage, is no different than Western End. It's a building with kids that we care about, with staff members that we adore. We need to keep all of them safe. So I think as, in the context of this discussion, it's really, one, do we think that we need off-duty police officers in our building? And then, two, do we need them to have all of our buildings, frankly?
Okay, and so also, so these are described differently, security guards versus off-duty police personnel. And currently, for the security guards, they do not have any type of connection with discipline. Is that currently true? This is what you're saying is important, but do you question that?
Well, I would say that they provide support, they're lucky. Discipline-wise, no, I mean, they don't discipline students. I think as we work our way through down into the bottom option, the focus on the shift from security guards to other aid support, as opposed to calling them safety, but other additional safety aid support, is develop the consistent expectations to form a focus, relationships with those kids. At the very least, we would be increasing the number of adults who are in the hallways and center of work and children to form those relationships. But I would also recommend looking at our current security guards, unless we have a very clear purpose for having security guards and a very clear set of expectations on situations where we expect them to intervene. Because again, depending on, depending on the security layout, our ability to effectively respond to a crisis is not consistent.
Are any of these individuals, any of the safety aids, are they, or I know this is a cross of the line, are any of them visible or present in playground or this, this school?
Yes. How many security guards currently?
We have a rotating, I don't think we have a total.
Yeah, seven. There's three to four that are in the school present each day.
That's a rotating schedule.
We're four in time?
Throughout the day.
How many times have we called 911 this year at Parker?
For safety issue, not medical.
Yeah.
Two or three?
Four or three, maybe?
No.
So for those two or three incidents, would it really have mattered to have an off-duty police officer on site? And I'm not saying would it have mattered with the situation, I'd have been a whole lot differently sure. But I imagine ultimately all of the situations were resolved, right? Would it really have changed the end outcome?
That would depend on, sorry. I just mean, wouldn't it depend on what the purpose of the off-duty personnel, the purpose?
What I think is, it's an interesting question, I'm talking about just for the off-duty police officer. He would be there to intervene in those three situations when Frederick's dad had to call the police department. And maybe either prevent a call to the police department or stop a situation, rest of it. I mean, did, is it even a thousand yards from the rest of the police department? So I'm not sure that there's a huge difference in response.
Do we know specifically how A H F employs their off-duty police officers? Do they get involved in the discipline process?
No, they don't.
So they're there simply to protect the physical from outside forces?
Sure. And so we have a couple of resources to use on that. Depending on the direction that we decide to go, we can always connect with A H F. They show a great willingness to provide support, hiring, and math is a great example. So this will be no different. Also, Chief Pollock and Deputy Chief Campwater have offered support as we go through this process as well for essentially looking at off-duty police officers. So we have expertise outside of our district that we can access to help make decisions around hiring and expectations.
So for, so for my previous district, we had a, I guess, a community cop that would be up there in the morning, but he is like the peak times. So is, is this kind of the same, on the same lines, or are we saying that there would be, that this, the community police officer, school started, he was there, he helped direct traffic, parents, you know, Camp Park here, they give you the, and everything. And then when school ended, I mean, when school started, he went on his way, and then when school went out, he came back. So is this the same kind of concept of we, there would be one dedicated to each building, or would it be a rotating?
So I would tell you that you probably will not have a lot of consistency with the off-duty police officer route, just because obviously they're off-duty, and so there's still a change. So it could generate some inconsistency and physical people who serve in that role, but again, their job expectation is short, as Camp said, it's injury. So I think we can cover, you know, I'm so thankful to the Los Angeles, Chicago Heights Police Department, for being at our schools and ride one dismissal rate. I think if we were looking for a stepped-up presence, we could think of some support for some of that. We've also initial conversation with Chief Pollock, um, the school resource officers, and kind of building, that intergovernmental agreement on that type of position, that that gets into police department staffing. So that's a little bit tougher when it comes down to, I would take it a little bit less as opposed to hiring off-duty police officers. So I, I think again, it just comes down to the purpose. You know, I think we can have a bigger presence before and after school, it's where we live before during the day.
If we were to, for example, for an off-duty police officer in the building, would that affect the recommendation of taking around the number of safety aids? Or are those mutually exclusive?
They're probably mutually exclusive.
Okay, so, this is not the right term, worst, worst case, nine eight five off-duty officer, one and two. That's a, that's ninety-five plus a hundred and seven, eight. So we're at two hundred?
Two hundred, two hundred and five thousand.
Two hundred thousand, not a hundred and fifty.
Right.
I would be open to a proposal that could compare to that. If you're looking for the pulse of them or that's one of the one that is. I, I wouldn't do anything from an off-duty police officer perspective, and Parker, then I wouldn't consider doing it every day.
Thank you.
I, I would, my perspective is, it's a very personal decision and it depends on factors like job, physical makeup, and so I would tend to defer to the building principals. What we're talking about, what we're talking about is the armed police officer. You know, we're talking about responding to the very unlikely, the very devastating, how one administration in future may feel about it, it may differ from helping the building approximately to this department, like the response to that, number of windows. And so those are factors that I'm not sure one side's, it's also inappropriate.
Can you recommend a, so with all due respect to our principals, they're not trained in security protocol. So would you recommend reaching out to Chief Pollock as far as getting recommendations on each of those buildings? Because I don't know that I would feel comfortable asking the principals to make that decision.
I, I took a blank way of doing it, and I guess my perspective on it is, it's sort of like, um, it's not unlike people who go out, they can still carry, you know, the elementary, the hundred thousand, number of people actually carrying on their nine percent. The reason is because, once they start that process, you know, you're not a security, you start thinking about it, my father is actually really, um, useful. Okay, so having armed security guards is simple. We're talking about spending thirty thousand dollars here for a building to potentially present for maintenance, as we all learned before, there is a chance that you get nothing for your thirty thousand dollars. And that's gonna, you know, we have five armed police officers, I mean, to be cynical, like to spoon, one says that, you know, one will do it. So, um, you're, you're gambling to the end. Uh, for the people that are willing to think through it, I mean, you know, if I were a teacher, I'd be sitting there looking around, you know, some of those part of classrooms have like the whole world windows. And I'd probably be sitting there saying, "Well, I think I would have gone for a sophomore, because of the fences." On the other hand, you know, that's what I mean, it's, it's a very difficult decision, and the, the real on-the-ground facts is to wonder, we're actually contributing to safety as opposed to just a illusion of like, I have to deal with dumb things like are there windows, what's the school layout, or are there entrances, and how well are the staff able to control entrances? You know, and those are things that are gonna very significantly affect the building. I'm not, sorry, I'm not saying we want to put the decision on the building principals. But I think it is a very specific decision. If the administration recommendation is that you get armed security guards for a building, I would, you know, I would probably support it. I don't necessarily sell which I have, but, um...
Didn't we, didn't we used to have a, a safety committee or something to that effect in the district? Did you, are we making that, Fran, did we used to have in front of safety?
Not a safety committee, you do have your discipline thing every year.
Way back when I was younger, more fit, right? So, you know, um, one of my many jobs was in the SWAT training, right? So, for years. And I was always hired as the, uh, the fake sheriff. I can tell you that being shot many times with paintballs and other unpleasant things. Real life, uh, life's through situations depend on stupid things like shadows, lighting, hallway length. The, those are the real things that matter. So, the ability of that school to deal with an active shooter, um, and a lot of ground ground factors, having an armed security officer there is helpful. But just think about if you're at one end of Parker, how long would it take you, or John, you guys are all fast, right? How long would it take to get from one end to the other? And how much can happen in that thirty, forty-five seconds? And then what's the delta between that and a police officer coming over from, you know, the police station from this way? Super. Reality, those stupid little details about the physical environment are what matters. And so adding armed police officers, not a guaranteed stop, uh, it's certainly better than nothing.
You're just, you're, you're improving the chance.
Yeah.
You're not solving it. You can't ever solve these things. So, it, it's, it's one option. All, all I said is I'm willing to hear a proposal that's a little more robust than the option listed here. I don't know if that's the right answer or not. I think you still have some work to do in terms of talking with the local police department, perhaps getting input from the building principals. It's probably not their decision to make, but they may have some points to consider that, that we haven't brought forward. Um, I don't know if it's the right answer or not, but my, my major point was if we do something for one building, I don't think we should do it in isolation. We should have a consistent three-door district line that makes sense. Now, the safety aids issue, I think, does correlate more directly with the building population and numbers and makeup and that kind of thing, which I think you contemplated earlier.
Any other thoughts on the safety stuff? We'll certainly bring this back.
Well...
A little more discussion.
Just one internal, as I'm, as I'm listening to all the ideas, one thing to keep in mind on the internal and not the external, it's probably, I think, you set up preventative measures, uh, you know, to be proactive in that regard if you do this. But the other piece is we have, in every building, every school, every child, every staff members, like, this crisis, so that, that, you know, we don't even have to debate that issue. However, we have students that are really older, that are there, that present a little different situations, um, who are a little bit more developed in, in, in some cases than, than when somebody came coming to the waiting desk and say, "Oh, you know..." But I think that this is where the building administration, uh, principals could come in and maybe talk about incident from the data in terms of incidents and what historically has occurred at these buildings. And then we take a look, go ahead, and in the world of living, praying that none of this ever happens to measure the, 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 the measure. But we have to keep in mind that we're seeing some things at Parker that I don't think, and I could be wrong, I don't know everything, that we don't see totally at the other, other major levels. Because we have older students there.
Yep.
So, it's just a block. So, we have a little bit more things that occur, and this is only a return level that I'm thinking about. So, if we had a more security presence at Parker, I can see that making more sense if the data showed and the building level came back and each of the other school says, you know, we probably call police for something like maybe once a year. But again, on proactive level going forward, we have to take it all into consideration.
Sure. Have any of our other buildings called 911 for any safety issues? Uh, I know we had a look on activation because we dropped it a certain once. The question was, have any of the elementarys called 911 for any issue? Any safety issue? I know that we've had some student health issues.
But so...
We haven't had any.
Take it all into consideration? Well, we may have more people hits that occur at Parker because of the age and...
Good.
Well, just a...
Well, as a bigger, big building, bigger population, would you have a, uh...
I do.
Well, one more thing. Um, the paragraph that says in this option, safety aids are trained, I, I'd like to just see a little more of there, like what your vision is beyond this. And I know that you're gonna look for the job description, but I think it'll be important for us to have a really clear understanding of, of, of what level of information on that with students related to discipline. When I see loyalty escalation strategies, I want to see, you know, there be some direct interaction there. If we could just settle a little bit more there. And you'll have to do that anyway for a job description, right?
Absolutely. Just as a, an initial answer, those students, or the students, the safety aids, you know, outlined in the report, would have a lot of student contact. That's the one. To have a lot of active supervision.
Yeah.
To head off those who shot people, you know? So, if they did notice a child who was agitated or, or who looked as if they were upset, they could intervene immediately on a supportive level, not, not pick anything against them. But I will actually bring some...
There, your internal preventative, mm-hmm, strategy.
Okay.
Okay. Are you still, uh, debating whether it's building safety aids or something else?
There's something on his hand.
Well, we should, I think, the job description certainly helps.
Sure.
We'll bring that back.
Or, yeah, and, and helping to kind of call the, the, the...
I think you can send your... I, I, I write, I suppose, write you my...
All right, so, we are very fast here in District 116. Thank you for your work. Provided that she was able to find it. So, the first, you know, just essential duties and responsibilities, monitor the playground before and after school, monitor arrival and dismissal, inform building principals of late arrivals, uh, daily target slips, secure exterior doors, monitor code areas. I will tell you... The verbs are check, monitor, facilitate, organize, assist, distribute, intervene is not assist. So, there is no expectation out of these people, not that I wouldn't, knowing who Mr. Cunningham is, that he would not fully jump into a situation if it was unsafe for students or staff. But there's nothing in this job description that would lead a safety aid to think that the expectation would be for them to intervene in the case of an active shooter, intervene in the case of someone trying to break into the building. You know, so...
And we don't wanna give them the impression...
No, I've seen that.
Probably should draw something up in the safety...
Okay. No, we're...
And then also maybe even what the relationship is with whatever they're going to be called and the dean of students. I know some of the things that we're talking about, just as a parent attending those first sessions and when there were two deans, what they described as their role has a little bit of overlap of what we're talking about. So, would you be helpful to Nina and Sam what the dean's role is and what the relationship is with these...
Can we, might be helpful to talk to high school about what their, uh, position is in incorporating these things? If they're not using door safety aid, what are they...
They use all law-abiding police officers for everything.
What do they call them though? They just call them...
Oh, okay.
Catching aid?
I, I can, I can check. I, I believe it is just, it's something along the lines of security. Leave my gun first.
Okay. We just...
I believe it's Mr. Romano at, at the high school facility inside.
Well, I know they do refer to them as security. That, I mean, I have a neighbor that, 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 he does, and he is a, he wasn't now, he's tired. He's a test. And they refer to them as security and make it clear...
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Great.
Capturing kids' hearts, lighters, like...
Would welcome the team from Parker.
So, forward members, good evening. As we had started, um, I'm gonna give everybody a little activity here, and you could just write your name, and if you choose to decorate your bag, set it in front of you. There are actually going to be models, some of those strategies from capturing kids' hearts so that you can experience a little bit of the program as we go along tonight. And when you finish, you can just go ahead and set your bag on the, on the, on the...
So...
I know, I have a... I can help with... Since it's not, it's not fair.
I don't know my channel.
Well, you didn't get a sit to...
I'm sorry. That's a...
Well, good evening. We're very excited to present, um, capturing kids' hearts, um, uh, capturing kids' hearts, kids' hearts. This is my vision as far as Parker, which is there's several reasons, uh, and is Parker as a place of innovation and high-quality instruction, a place where students, staff, and family members love to come because they feel valued and appreciated. Uh, so, capturing kids' hearts would, uh, help us to do in that, um, direction. So, when capturing kids' hearts, one of the things they, they talk about in order to capture the mind, you have to capture their heart. And so, a lot of the things that, uh, one, a number of our staff, we, uh, we actually went into the school, that, and so we did capture, capture kids' hearts, and then we also, uh, a few of us did a two-day training. I was excited when I went to see the school. I got more excited, um, during the two-day training. Uh, what I noticed is a lot of the things that are important to me, uh, was featured in, um, the training. So, al- also along with part of the research, um, that was a big focus, being on building positive relationships, um, to the students. And so, uh, what we know today is, in school, it's important as far as to have quality, high-quality instruction, but it's also important as far as to have a positive relationship to be able to maximize, uh, students' potential. And so, this year, coming into Parker, um, we heard about the challenges that we had at Parker, um, we looked at some opportunities to be able to make a difference at Parker. We saw some pieces that was, that unstructured timing, uh, we put some things in place, and to be honest with you, we hadn't had the results of what we wanted to create that vision of what we wanted. And going through the training for capturing, capturing kids' hearts, uh, I think it would be a big goal, uh, to help us get there. So, just some, some opportunities that we have, uh, at Parker to move towards the vision, uh, with capturing kids' hearts, uh, would be as far as to, uh, do, uh, the number of programs. So, be important to, uh, afford me to pay that, uh, share some of our, um, not a high moment for us, um, but one of the pieces with capturing kids' hearts, it builds a, a community, it shows, uh, its shared responsibility. It goes not just on the administrators, it's not just on, uh, the teachers, but there's that shared responsibility as far as, uh, with students. So, that's a key piece in the, uh, in the program. And so, um, we talked, uh, you, you all talked a little bit earlier about the social emotional needs too. Uh, one of the things we put in place in Parker for this year was teaching those social emotional lessons. And that was one day with the capturing kids' hearts model, this would be every day, every period would be addressing the student's social emotional needs. And so, again, to have an impact as far as on our, um, our students. And so, we're gonna look at, um, what capturing kids' hearts is and some of the...
Thank you everyone. We hope you guys having a good time this Sunday. Um, I was honored to go to the training for that, it was a great experience, and, and I was asked to come and share some of my experiences as a group. I don't often speak to the different programs, but when it came to this particular program, I felt very passionate about it, and I feel, you know, I'm in full support of the program. So, it's kinda easy to talk from a place you're leading. So, what about capturing, capturing kids' hearts? It is to me a mentality, and, um, there were five takeaways that I took away from the program, and, um, I need a little input from you. So, there are five, I have five fingers, future two, okay? Um, five things to take away. One of those five things to actually make a heart, can you make a heart with me? Okay? I'm gonna teach you the five things that I actually, um, learned while I was there. So, um, the very first thing was that teachers will be, after receiving this training, that they will be proactive, okay? So, going into every activity, every lesson with a plan, okay? You will definitely have a plan at the end of this, okay? Because sometimes your activity can be lessened, but you wanna make sure that there's an end goal, what's the end game? And so, this program tries to encourage that. So, the first thing was that teachers will be proactive. Can you say teachers will be proactive?
Teachers will be proactive.
Okay, so, um, the second thing that I found was something that we know. If you think about your favorite teacher, I hope someone captured your heart along the way. Being positive, okay? They teach us how to be a caring teacher, a caring person. There's a lot of common sense things that as a good person, you should just do naturally, but not everyone, sometimes common sense, as they told us in the training, is not always common practice. And so, um, the second takeaway that I learned was teachers will be proactive, will be positive. Would you say teachers will be positive?
Teachers will be positive.
Um, being problem solvers. We nationally are problem solvers, um, as teachers, I find at Parker, I deal with some of, you know, the best teams that are solving solution oriented, um, trying to make a change to our culture and our climate there, trying to be... But this program gives us strategies, put into our toolkit, um, how to be, um, problem solvers, how to deal with some of those things that you're gonna need to deal with in your classroom on a consistent basis. So, being a problem solver is something that I learned as I was there as well. So, can you say teachers will be problem solvers?
Teachers will be problem solvers.
Um, properly engaging, oh, here's a problem solver just walked in. Uh, excuse me, this people. So, properly engaging our students is something that they taught us. We wanna make sure that our children are actively listening, they're just not compliant, they are fully engaged, they're on fire for learning, okay? And that's through activities, that's through our interactions with them, that's through making it a positive and caring environment that we can achieve that. So, making sure that our students are properly engaged. So, can you say teachers will properly engage students?
Teachers will properly engage students.
Okay. Um, and then my last key that I learned while I was there was the idea of passing the tongue. And to me, that's the idea, I mean, we have a lot of teacher-centered classrooms, teacher-centered environment, but instead, the teacher's not the only leader that there is in the classroom. We want to cultivate leadership in our students. We want them to have opportunities to shine and to help to contribute to our environment, as all excellent teachers do anyway. But the focus was on making sure that our students have opportunities to lead. So, passing the tongue is one of the things I learned there. So, teachers will pass the tongue. Can we say that?
Teachers will pass the tongue.
So, these are some of the tools that were used to me while I was there that I feel like, you know, I wish I, I mean, some of the things I've done in my classroom, okay, I had packaged it up, capturing kids' hearts, okay? But I really, really, really felt passionate about some of the things that I was learning Oh, I have to draw, ooh. Nice, okay. Um, so, the first thing on here, the benefits, there are a lot of positives, it's kinda difficult to put it into four, but one positive would be definitely, um, creating those healthy relationships with students, okay? So, healthy relationships. It is said that people don't really care what you know until they know that you care. So, you already know, right? And so, the relationships that we develop, capturing kids' hearts is all about building relationships with staff, you know, the vertical, horizontal relationships throughout the school. And so, I learned a lot from there of providing a safe environment for our students as well. So, that was the other benefit. They, they beneficial, they taught us how to notice the good things in kids, notice when they're there and when they're not there. Things that we should be going and getting common sense, but making it, uh, part of our mentality as an entire school. Secondly, it says that there would be a clear cultural expectation school-wide, so one vision, one plan, one goal as a school. And I really like that idea so that when students are in my classroom, okay, they feel the same as them when they're in this Peacock classroom or they're in this Rorod back there in the classroom, a consistent school-wide expectation, okay? Um, and that is something that they get student input, and I really like that piece too. So, student input, teacher input, and order for us to have one vision and be on one team. Uh, third, it says that teachers can get the opportunity to model. So, to me, as I was, to me, that's like I get an opportunity to be a supermodel, okay? Um, and since I'm only five-four, this is my chance to be a model of the things that we want to see in our students. And I really appreciate, uh, learning that, teaching them, not expecting them to have social skills, teaching them that it's okay to shake someone's hand, to say hello, um, to say, "How was your day?" You can engage with someone, and, um, not expecting to come through the doors with those skills. So, I'd like to make that a focus for capturing kids' hearts. And, um, that we can model them with each other, right? And finally, uh, one of the things that I took away was the fact that these, uh, these social skills will impact our environment overall. We will see more compliments, more affirmations, okay? Like what you're about to see, as like putting things in your bag, right? Um, we don't wanna assume that students know how to honor one, one another, give each other a basic compliment. Uh, sometimes we take that for granted, and that's something that has to be taught, has to be taught. And so, for why, that is something that I took away from capturing kids' hearts as well. So, that is all. And you guys have a great listening. So, the next piece of this is, um, so it sounds great, but why does it work? And so, really focusing on the research, can I just... Okay, so, the next important piece of capturing kids' hearts is, is really taking a look at the research that kind of grounds the whole system here. Because it's great to say that we're gonna do this wonderful thing, school-wide support. And so, one of the pieces of why it works is because, um, capturing kids' hearts focuses on that, that most of our learned behavior is under modeling. So, if we're, if we help, if we want them to act a certain way, we should be showing them that way. So, if we want them to have positive relationships, we as the teachers, as the staff in the building, should be having those positive relationships with each other and the students. Uh, the other piece is social emotional learning. So, as we said before, we, in Illinois, are required to do social emotional learning. It's a piece of our curriculum. We haven't done it in the most purposeful way apart. We've tried different ways, and it hasn't worked. So, capturing kids' hearts will allow us to seamlessly integrate social emotional learning to every aspect of the things that we do. So, each and every day, our teachers will be with purpose teaching kids social emotional learning processes, and a lot of it will be not direct, without the knowledge, so indirectly which, again, if you look back to modeling, that's the best way to reach students. Another piece of the research is the connectedness. So, with middle school kids especially, they're going to do things based on how they feel, the connections that they've got. And so, the more connections we can build with them, the more we are going to have this foundation of positive behaviors and less adverse behaviors. And those risk behaviors are classified as anything that can get to your office. So, whether you're saying something inappropriate, putting your hands on someone, if we give those connectedness, a person they feel cares about them, then we're limiting those behaviors. And finally, the overall benefits of this program are, first, it will, it has been shown to raise standard accessors. That's just the average, I mean, a few more could use less. Um, there's also been a significant decline in disciplinary issues because students feel a connection with their school. They feel like they have people who care, it's a place they want to be, and so they're less likely to misbehave. And finally, there's an increase in overall measure of social emotional wellbeing. If we take a look at those five survey surveys or the discussions we have with kids, um, we should see an increase in these measures because they should feel that they have a safe place, people care about them.
All right, uh, good evening. Thank you very much. I'm gonna continue the conversation about capturing kids' hearts. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I was invited to go visit in early market, I don't know my height because, um, it was just another one of those things that you say, "They're gonna try to implement this, and we're gonna do what we're gonna do, we're gonna do it", which is, you know, it's on my dangers here, and it looks like, uh, we have a lot of buying so far. We walked into, we walked into about a dozen elementary schools and about a dozen middle school, uh, classrooms, and we saw kind of pretty similar things, you know? We saw social contracts, which was either on a piece of paper or a bulletin board, whatever, depending preference, uh, in which the students themselves in each class made their own expectations of the classroom, and they signed it, and you saw some students even hold each other accountable during class to their social contract. We saw affirmation boards, the bulletin board of panted affirmations from when somebody was, uh, feeling negative or need for support. They went over, we grabbed panted affirmations, we looked into them, they're a social emotional learning factor. Uh, and the most important, when I started operating, implementing on a, on a small basis, we saw change everywhere, the four questions. What are you doing? What are you supposed to be doing? Are you doing, uh, that right now? And what are you now going to do? Uh, I spent thirty minutes a day in the seventh grade lunchroom, which, uh, has negative perception from the outside, but honestly, it's not too bad, uh, having done it for three years. And I always struggled with the fact that we have students who are constantly hitting up without permission, and we have students who constantly feel entitled to do whatever they may be during this thirty minutes. And until you actually identify the right way to handle the situation, behavior is not going to succeed, they're not going to cognizantly understand why they're doing this and why we keep asking them to sit down. So, I've done this a couple of times with some students who have gotten up and tried to go to the restroom without permission. I will stop and tell them, "What are you doing?" I won't even ask them, "Where are you going?" I won't ask them, "Who told you you can get permission?" "What are you doing?" "I'm going to the restroom." Valid question, valid answer. "What are you supposed to be doing?" "I'm sitting now." "Well, are you doing that right now?" "No, I'm not." Obviously, we're standing here talking, right? "But what are you, uh, what are you now going to do?" "I'm going to ask permission to use the restroom." And they know every time, I'm going to say yes, because I know a combination is already there, and we proceed. There was no conflict, there was no give and take. It was a teacher and a student having a meaningful conversation, having a pro-social conversation, which are critical to learning. Demonstrated that is a forty percent increase from the schools that have implemented capturing kids' hearts and pro-social behavior, which was a lot of what Dr. Smith was talking about earlier, uh, trying to implement more social emotional learning at Parker this coming year. There's been a demonstrated, uh, students have demonstrated the increase in risk behaviors and along with that, because discipline has rolled to have decreased. At Parker this year, as we say, we have one thousand five hundred and forty-seven referrals. Sixty-one percent of those have occurred in classroom, and forty-four percent are tied to construction and design. If we were to have a program like this, we should know the benefits, and we see it in place, and we have the proper training and the proper consistent funding from all of our staff and our students, we can easily fund these schools for our... we can easily fund these schools for being promoted and taken to school. That was our best hope, because as we mentioned earlier, how this can become an impact at Harper. Any, any middle school, any elementary or high school wants a positive school climate. And that's the first thing you should notice when you walk in any school. How the climate is from the first minute you walk in, some individuals, and then you see interactions. We want our administration to be able to focus more on leading our classroom and help us, take us to that next level of providing meaningful feedback on our teaching and provide better ways to get lessons across and get material across to our students who they are beneficially learning at every point in the day. We can increase our student performance, we can increase students' staff taking risks. Taking risks in how we're going to take this material and push for the value that we know there. Sometimes we say in our head, "I can't do this this way with these classes because they're not going to be able to be mature enough to handle it." And if we were to have another, like consistently to curb that, we can then take those risks. Students can take risks and be more holding on, and be more engaged in their conversation and discussion. We can attract new families, as I mentioned in our earlier meeting, and they're all the credit for this. Ms. Hartman said, "The most people come to floss, want to live." They not come here to work, they come here to live. And when we want students and we want to hear people in the community talk about Harper, we want them to be proud that they say, "I said my shout to Harper." We want them to be proud because we have Harper, we have great kids, and we have great teachers. And we feel like we have all the leverage in the world to improve our narrative at Harper and be the best support staff for us.
So have you bought into it now? Have you bought into the idea of this now? You started out by saying a lot of things that I already bought into.
I'm, I'm, I'll be your first person in line.
So as, um, so, um, as we wrap up our final trip here around to the VAS, this is one of the techniques that Capturing Kids Hearts uses as an affirmation. Confirming each other, recognizing each other's work, either the student or a teacher. The research behind Capturing Kids Hearts is about positivity about what it does to a child's brain to have a positive interaction with peer or with adult. It's part of the program, and it's part of the program that is able to have that relationship-building aspect between adults to adults in the building, adults to students, students to students. And your affirmations are pretty key so that you can read through them and feel the firm in your work of the district.
So I will tell you, pulled out my affirmation bag last week. There was a physical response that happens when you read direct feedback about your contributions, your transformation to your family. It's, it's a physical reaction, it's brain research. And as we went to all the districts, as we went to the training, I certainly want to commend that original team, Eric, Nate, and Tara, we went to see, we were talking to a veteran teacher of thirty years, probably plus, or in the retirement pipeline. We were talking about how this program changed his whole life, not just classroom management. It wasn't just how I work with students, it changed, it improved my life. Because it does change your lens. You approach situations from a point of growth. And every opportunity is another opportunity to develop that relationship with the student. With the example that they have shared, that is prime battle. That is, that is, that's a hard struggle to happen. And it happens more often than not currently, all of it is, right? This is an opportunity to change it. It's an opportunity to give our teachers the tools to work with our students, give our students the tools to work with each other. But also to really address some specific problems that have been identified by the teachers, have been identified by national data, by anecdotal data. I feel very strongly that with the right support of the team at Harper, we're going to run this program with a lot of fidelity. It's the means of a lot of our children to really change, I think the perfect word to say, improve the narrative. And we always talk about showing them what's happening in our buildings. We have great things happening at Harper. And so many of those pieces were drowned out because of what we heard about the motion. Come see it, right? Come, come experience it with us. We can really get back to the point of really bragging about the great things that our teachers and students do as we address the issue of social emotional learning. Any specific questions?
I have a couple of questions in common. First, um, this is the most excited I've ever seen you perform here. So we thoroughly appreciate it. Now we know what it, what it looks like, so I'm excited. My first question is, um, how, how do you measure success in this? I mean, obviously pointed to some areas like we need discipline course. But how will you, how, what are other metrics that you will be using to measure the success of this? And then are there metrics in place when you're working at, just the data for example, that will allow you to have a straight line to this program in terms of, um, it contributing to the reduction in this?
I think there might be some things that need to be developed in, I know Dr. Smith was talking about the data. Something to come out of that.
I think I see five for five lab. Because there's a lot of soft data points here. Yeah, we can measure the discipline referrals. But I think there are other pieces of data, not only achievement, growth, but we're talking about student attendance, we're talking about essentials. There are all these other pieces that we'll want to measure that will give us a really good indicator of whether or not the program is successful.
I would, to that point, I think sometimes those, the softer data points, those qualitative pieces sometimes get lost or discarded after workshops are over. And I think that it would be helpful to keep those around, so, you know, we're very excited about this. You know, I think that just, I would love to see some initial thoughts. And then, you know, as time goes by, you know, seeing, okay, are we still in love with this? You know, honeymoon period over, you know, do, you know, how do those key points evolve?
It may change our, it may change the way that we want to measure some pieces. So this work is really tied to some work out of Harvard with the tripod system. That measures all these indicators, it's called the seven Cs. So as you're talking about connectedness, caring, capacity, all these different pieces that, that make up the school experience. And you may find that some of the ways that we're measuring either using the five Cs in measuring the student experience or the parent experience may not give us the full picture. So we may want to use different, different measures as well.
One of the things that we're speaking, all of us have a desire as far as making positive connections. They give us the tools to be able to do that. And then you have the ability to have student experiences throughout the day. Not just having that one great teacher that they connect with. But again, as far as throughout the day, because this may have been about, right? They gave us information in terms of appropriate touch, so we did seven today. So imagine coming into these classes, you're shaking their hand, giving a fist bump. She got nine years throughout the day, you know? And so that's just as far as that initial piece. So a lot of this tool, a lot of the strategies, again, is based on the research.
How many teachers went to the training and how many teachers? So it sounds like you had two of us, you did the visits and then training, right? How many teachers did?
So two teachers went to the training, three went to the school visit along with all the leadership.
Can you tell us a little bit about the student that you visited?
As a graduate student, we went to Gower School District. They don't look like us, I would tell you. But the middle school is a middle school. And that's where, that's where we saw, and we really wanted to see it nationally, right? So well-functioning elementary school, okay, yeah, they're adorable, that's why I was in junior principal. They're perfect in everything. But at the middle school, regardless of your locale, there are certain adolescent behaviors that we want to see. And, you know, for example, just standing right in the middle of that A3 hallway during a passing period. You notice differences in the way that we talk to each other. You notice an immediate difference in the way that every kid enters class. And as Fred said, there's a connection point, an eyeball, an eye-walk connection between that teacher and that student. So, hey, we're connected, this is great, or oh, I see an issue, why, right, you're walking in the door. Let's see if we can get that addressed right away till you have the next forty-three minutes to learn as opposed to just do, to worry about the previous class, all these different things. So, you know, I would say Gower, Gowersboro Ridge, well-implying at Hope River Force. As far as local districts, and I know that, I think HF had, they were at the very start of a conversation about this program without any intention of going either way. But I know that they at least had a conversation.
Well, I think this is exciting, I mean, I love the proactive approach to this. And for so many years, when we've had discussions in this room, either with me sitting on this side or with me sitting on that side, the theme that I have consistently heard is that students are both the problem and the solution. And this is, is an approach where the equation looks very different. And there's a role for everybody in this process. If the, if we want to see the things that you put as your impact, then it's not just about focusing on children as both the problem and the solution, right? Accountability, it's adults, adulting on a daily basis, it's adults modeling positive behavior. I think it's great, I love the contracts, I think. Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like there are contracts in that. My home kids, sometimes, but it's, it's about, it's about accountability. And, um, we just, we, we need more of that. And I have loved a program that has teachers being accountable to each other, students being accountable to each other, teachers being accountable to students. So I personally, I'm a great kind of type. So, um, I, I looked through the agreement that's in our board packet. Is there an element that provides training for parents so that the conversation can continue at home with the same way, you know, same with parents there?
Good.
Okay.
I think that's a key.
We don't, yeah.
Absolutely.
Not all part of the tree. Yeah. Actually, and that's, I mean, I think we talked about this at some point before, right? You just want to, you know, contacts, you know, that could be signed in the school year, right? Between parents and districts in terms of expectations. Because what you want are, are some, you know, the positive things that are being modeled in school, you should be seeing that at home, right? But, you know, yeah, I think that's great, I mean.
Really, the people that presented, talking about something that had a very, so, again, it's a light change.
Thank you very much, thank you all. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you know, we're counting through the alphabet. Here, we're on letter I. And we have to give to X. Next item on the agenda, compliance results.
So, again, this is really just an information item, there's really nothing to discuss. We just make sure we share it out, we had a compliance visit. And we responded to all the issues that were identified by the intermediate service center in Cook County. And I'm just sharing the information with you since we did receive it.
Any questions about the compliance visit? When we'll make contact. Do you have to, I see the citations, you have to?
We responded.
Oh, you responded.
Yeah, we were responding, yeah, this is just a setup.
Next item, occupational and physical therapist contracts.
Again, if you have any specific questions, these are the contracts for our OTPT services that we've contracted out, and I'm asking.
No questions? Next item, electronic IUD and 504 software. Any discussion?
The, um, the electronic IUD system that we're currently using has been discontinued, as well as it not being really the most, we were looking anyway. And then when they discontinued it, it just reinforced that we needed to find another system. ECI is a system that is really integrated, has a 5.4 component, which will make us keeping our 5.4, um, stop, the 5.4 documents in one software place versus having a lot of different copies, and so a little bit of a dark days with that. So we're really excited about moving forward with a system that has both. It has lots of other components to it, but we're just putting our fill in on PCG law right now. But ECI is a great program.
It's actually, right now, it's a little bit cheaper, um, about four or five hundred dollars. They charge us per student, and then we have a carve-out of special education students against the 5.4 cost. So you really, there's very few people who ever have a 5.4 at the end of the year. It could happen, but, so they do a carve-out for it. So there's a little cost involved in the 5.4 to have to move to that software. But the IUD program is much, and the 5.4 program is much less expensive than the other program that we didn't look at, but by thousands of dollars.
Thanks, Mr. Nelson.
You had me in this cost class.
Seeing cost, right, next time I will, you have a problem. Cost, just stand up and say that. Um, any discussion? Thank you. Next item, frontline apps and software.
Sure, so this is just an initial discussion, and they are, they're suffering from being overpriced currently because as Fran and I got angry or angry about the price, we started calling around and exposed wildly different costs. So we are, we are one of the, we are probably one of the few districts that has not automated a substitute process. Certainly it's off-cook, but really everywhere. As we started to get the price of it wildly different. Districts with less, um, so it's not great about people who would need a sub, a substitute teacher, and people who would not, and then all those people go to the system. So people with less, teachers who would need subs were paying less than people with a larger pool, right? And that's on a per-person basis. You figure that some volume will drive the change in price. It seems to have been just preciously determined. That's not good for us, and so what we're doing is trying to make our consortium of, I think right now we have like six or seven districts, and so, you know, targeting a couple thousand users essentially. If we can go a district or a larger contract, they bring everyone's price down, we're going to try to do that. So we'll bring this back.
I was also.
Yeah, see, we're helping you out.
So, so, just so I understand, we look into one of our sub, uh, getter system, our subfinder system, which, you know, there's, there's a couple out there that are saying they're all.
They've been purchased by Frontline primarily. So there was SubFinder, there was SubFinder, ESAP.
Yeah.
ESAP bought SubFinder, then Frontline bought ESAP. So.
How are we trying to do this now?
Right now, we're looking at it, and just.
Are we trying to know, I mean, that part, but?
Oh, you're not going to answer stuff.
Okay, so if a teacher doesn't, a substitute teacher doesn't show up for a classroom, do they know that right now?
The buildings would know, we would not.
Would the buildings know right now, or should they know right now?
I would say that they do. I would say that they do, mainly because our, our teachers are really good about, they're trying to say, "I'm not going to get it," they let the principals know, or they'll also CC, or they'll email Courtney, CC the principals and the building administrative assistants, and so there are a number of people looking out for the coverage.
Okay, because the reason I'm telling that, I'm going to say this, um... Okay, because the reason I'm going to say this, last week, we had a classroom that was not covered at Park. And luckily, and I'm saying because of the students, they were able to go through that period without any type of supervision. That was very scary to hear.
Absolutely.
And because, it was, I think it was a miscommunication from the sub. And I didn't get into the details, but when I hear something like that, and I know that things can jump off, as you know, everybody knows from the sub, and how some of the classrooms will act, some things can really happen. So, that's why I'm asking this question, because I want to really make sure that, you know, that the process is not so manual that we're needing children out of tenure.
No, but, you know, what are the, sure, sure, what are the hallmarks of a digital system? The, you know, Pierce Parker, first period, these are all the teacher exercises that are automatically sent out to all the staff members. Right now, that would have to be generated by somebody that probably don't. Teachers have asked to know who's in and out of the building, and so we're trying to throw out the best way to communicate those processes.
Do you think something like this will help us do better?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, just, real quick, so will this increase the pool of subs that we have coming to our district? And will it affect the filter by which we allow people to work with our children?
It won't, it won't change the filter on how people are approved to be substitutes. I would probably say it will, it will offer an easier opportunity for substitute teachers to take jobs. Because right now, you know, with the people that we're competing with, they log in, they see the job, they take it, take it, take it, and then they're removed.
Yeah, it's literally, you have to, there's an app, especially, I had to get a smartphone just so I had the app, so that I could compete with people as opposed to having to take a call, you know, because it literally runs that thing. But, and sometimes people will take them and then dump them in a better job. And so my concern is that, because that's just happening.
Sure.
You know, we're about great at this stuff, well, you know, you're, you don't really, is there a level of commitment that we have, or a relationship by which we can say, hey, Bob, you know, or Jane, you know, you said you were coming, they didn't change their mind, right? Is there still a quality control?
I, I think so, I think part of the other benefit is, it's one system. So, the data service sub is accepting the job in District 161, and there's, you know, I took a job in Serena, and there's this wonderful job over at Heather Hill that I'm really, I really prefer, I can, I've already accepted the job. So, there is reciprocity in the system, not only between the buildings, but pick another district. Right, so your profile matches, so it's not just canceling jobs, there's, there's some hoops to jump through, and data that's collected on people who do that. So, it adds a level of organization to the process that's currently manual. At the substitute place, they cancel the job, say they cancel a job at midnight, they're not going to call Courtney at midnight, but what they can do is go in and cancel the program, which automatically opens up our job again. So, whenever the time's set, then we can email, text, and call automatically from the system, whether it's 5:00 AM or whatever, it will automatically start that process, as opposed to waiting for the human on the other end of the email, Courtney, to get up before 4:30 in the morning, start trying to, you know, get a substitute for a math period or a math class or take your pick.
Yeah, I was blown about the time that she starts doing that very early in the morning, which makes sense, but it's more than worth it.
Sure.
Dana, on the other hand, can you, if you see somebody who, if you see the name of a person that comes in, can you reject them? And say, we don't want this person coming in?
Yes, now, I would say, the way that I handle those with the passive, if, it's like the police officer shit. We wouldn't accept a substitute at Heather. Why would we accept them and take your pick? So, I think we just want to be very clear about our expectations, provide the training for those, that pool of people that we need. And then if someone's not meeting our high level of, then they're really not meeting any of this. Those individual situations where I'm having personality issues, those are different, but if someone's not doing a good job, then they really shouldn't sell them.
One quick, number's question. Have we factored the cost of having this versus the cost of the man-hours that, of having one person manage all?
This does cost them.
So, my marriage, you love the software, but the pricing, is it, are there competitors at this point? Is this a?
No, yeah, there are no competitors.
And the pricing, what, by student, how are they?
Well, it's priced by the people who need a substitute and the people who don't. And, you know, essentially, what we saw, it had an average price somewhere around twenty, twenty-five, fifty, twenty-six and change, all the way up to thirty-some dollars, thirty-four dollars per person who would need a sub. And somewhere around the eighteen, nineteen dollar mark, and people who do not need a sub. So, I think it's overpricing that above, that's why, that's why we're in here.
Any other questions? Next item, residency process. Any discussion? I didn't look up, sorry. I'm just glad I'm here for you. Run a letter in. We gotta get X.
Just tell me the last one.
Here we go, so, possibilities, we can do everyone, or we can do all. Because the last time I brought you K36, which is everybody on a three-year cycle, we can still do everyone, I would pretend that when you do K36, you're probably doing way more than just K36 for the siblings. We will also do anyone who's flagged in the system by the building, so I think that, you know, it's not passing the test. And we can do it a number of ways. What I've heard is both the concern about making sure that we're checking adequately, and then kind of counteract that with trying to get through here in less time, or less time. So, it's really just, you know, your discretion, what you want to do, we're going to make sure.
So, there's a comment in here that said that you guys had the impression that we didn't do the whole favor of the K36 thing. So, I guess my mind, the registration process, part of the problem is trying to do two different jobs. Registration and enforcement are separate jobs, and they have four different departments. This is fine for registration, if you want to do it, it's fine. And then registration, generating your registration, enforcement, you got the investigation, it's way different. I've always thought the process is you guys have everyone come in here every year, because you're trying to be the enforcement and registration. So, I'm totally, personally, I don't know, I'm totally okay with this. I think you guys need to come back to us on, that's the subject.
And, you know, this is kind of the baseline, to get an idea of, you know, who's really out there that we'll be getting. And then it's, you know, the ones that we're not sure about, how we're going to pursue those. And we've talked about a couple of different options that we may want to try a little bit of everything, see how it works for us.
So, I would suggest, so probably enforcement and investigation take away, is everybody, is the problem that we're dealing with. And so a good test of whether you're, so if you had, say, five residents investigations here, and the question you want to ask is, is that the right number, did I catch all five? Were there five that I missed, or, I don't know, right? So, the way to test it is, so personally, you can't test it without doing an actual firm investigation, at least once every couple years. But the real, the proper measure for whether your enforcement efforts are working is whether you can successfully predict some factors about it. So, in other words, you know, if you can predict the behavior, then you have a good handled situation. If you try to predict behavior, you're totally lost, then you definitely don't have a good handled situation. And you need to conduct further investigation, so, because when your prediction's wrong, you just don't have nothing. So, right now, we don't know, we don't know. The number of residency investigations you've done this year may be the perfect number. And it may not, and the only way you're ever going to know is by some type of investigation, what you guys brought to the board last year, or spot checking, or other, you know, checking, there's a variety of ways to do it. But that, to me, is a totally separate question from the process of deciding if a school should be fair to, we want parents to have and use the time, it shouldn't be a difficult process.
I mean, it's not even for schools, if you're already in our system, to do it online from a comprehensive, um, when they come in here, for the most part, every person, and that drug dealer places something that doesn't look right in line for the parent. Or stop them at their door, if they don't have all the drugs.
Is, is the notion of allowing experts to verify residency off the table, why do we continue to make our staff do something they are ill-equipped and ill-trained to do? Let us outsource this effort to the experts.
Our staff is asking to conduct the investigations.
No, we have all, we use. Yeah.
I should want to clarify, I'm going to try this.
But right now, we're responding to those.
Correct, then we'll, to your knowledge.
On John's point, have we looked at any other firms that provide that service?
Yeah, there was possibly, I thought we were asking for a number, because the number of firms wasn't totally off the table, but we wanted to see more than one company, we wanted to see.
Many of the business facilities are national, but they're doing it themselves, have not gotten another name.
Yeah, this is, this is a challenging one, especially at the investigations, and I'd be honest, we have people who I trust, who give incredible advice, have shared with their investigators, and they're just not, they're not willing to expand. Already over.
And it's tough to deal with because of my ability to.
Well, it's limited, I mean, you're only, we employ the research, or full state surveillance, maybe once a month. Obviously, busier times earlier in the year than right after the rigs, but not at the best lock with our investigation. But to John's point, and to Fran's point, we're limited on the software options to verify residency without doing it ourselves. We had not brought that back, because we figured that that was pretty much the only solution out there, based on board's initial, I believe from about a year ago, last month, actually, about a year ago, this week sometime. There's a very strong. So, I think.
So, we're limited to the number of companies, and not a lot of companies out here. Because I recall, we had this last, this conversation, when he spoke about it, and basically, the show, help. We had just asked for more options and choices. That was it, so if we are, because you were saying that they are not allowed options and choices. And that's why we made that the.
So, Nashville doesn't serve public school, right? So, I mean, like 90 school districts, or like, I don't know about 90, but I mean, around here, that's the name, I think, Top Number or. Now, I think too, I think probably in a very fast, short period of time, this is even very, not much. So, I would definitely say, I think I would. But, on why would we, why would we?
We can bring back some, is it the enforcement versus?
Process.
Yeah, there are two separate things, so I think, if we can get direction on the K36, I think that we can go back and determine the best way, bring that back to, to verify.
Can I just make sure I understand this? This would mean that parents of K36 students who come into North Kinga, do residency, and who register their students, and every other person, like, if I only had a second or fourth grader, I could go through my, my normal, I would come in, I would be able to.
Does everybody know that?
No, we have a design, we can't. Unless you're a first class.
Well, unless you're a new student, new student will call, come in, and actually, kindergarten will come in, play on the floor. So, present, this very, kindergarten, all time. But we're talking about that year after year, we're improving this.
See, I thought about this process when I was registering my daughter for K3, and I wondered, because they asked for the same stuff. Now, I was probably going to go to your first year, I can remember with the old, this is a time back, I had to do this every year, so I did, I thought about this when I was actually renting my youngest daughter, you know, and we got this residency process, and I'm like, oh my God, this is going to make a lot of money.
It's true.
Because they're taking, making copies, right? So, you know, to the point, I think to window some of that, but yes, we want to, you know, make sure you're diligent. I wouldn't be opposed to doing the K36, as long as we were capturing those new students. I would not be opposed.
All new students, I mean, to have.
Well, as long as somebody would read this and think, oh, I have a secondary, I don't have to.
We're offering a student registration spot.
Well, the other thing, I mean, I don't know the high schools process fully, but you're just handing out your documents, your proof of residency documents, they're copying them, and then you're leaving. Actually, I feel like there's a lot more going on, when we.
When, when people like here, we have a place for them to do their online registration, they've not done it for us. We've taken the opportunity to give them 30% lump donations, to make sure that they get to their hands. Although, if we go with this K36, probably not going to do that here, but we'll do that schedule pickup, and they will blanket their hands there instead, because that way, you know, we get everyone, it's by all, but one of those applications that everyone's can. So, the process that we're doing here will probably be a lot smaller, but we'll still give them the ability to do the online if they need help, and, you know, we're still struggling, I have a lot of challenges, and we can do that good for them as well. And usually, we also have one of the nurses on the force that can handle their medical.
But you think that it's for?
They can do that.
Well, all those forms, those, you know, like emergency contact, and all that.
Emergency contact, and all that information should only have done once in this year. And then when you come back, the only thing you can make is a patent, they provide some things. So, if they have to do anything else, I should. Because it's just the affidavit, by family, just to register those residency.
We could don't show them.
Well, that'll be eliminated, isn't it?
Yeah.
I would do more.
Fran has the recipe.
Yeah. Castle, students progress. Okay, policy 5120, what do you have as conduct and conduct limits? This is a very minor addition to this board policy. It is because of the rules that were amended, and it requires written standards of conduct covering conflicts of interest and governing the actions of school district employees engaged in the selection, award, and administration of contracts. All is it, but one of the compliance pieces that we had, we do not have the updated policy, so that's what we're saying. School photographers, Harry Ritten, Dr. Wilson's over there, met with all three major photography companies representatives. major photography companies' representatives, and put together that might be trying to compare apples to apples, or, uh, we then brought the information to the client, and we are recommending, and, uh, they have given us a two-year rate guarantee for parents. One of the things that we liked about, like, how it really tickles us, is the fact that you can personalize your child's vehicle with two paintings of your own photographs. It's kind of cool. Really, most of the companies, their incentives are really reaching across the board. There is a thousand dollars sign on us, I was supposed to make a five. And, but here are recommending Vando.
Is there any consideration for quality of work, or is it pretty much through the same?
I will tell you that everything that I've heard from people coming across the board in this area, if you're using one of these three, you're going to use Light Touch, H R, and either Vando, and Vando, and Light Touch are probably two of them. And H R imaging?
What did we have?
Which one was it? H R? No, Light Touch, which is recently bought by, at, especially.
Shirt.
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 What do we currently use?
H.
Uh, H R is great.
Any discussion, any more expression on that?
Hey.
What's this?
So, is that history to lease buses for two years? Um, started looking at this a little bit further. Really, the thought process was, if we could, well, whether it's maintenance that you could be done, but sort of the matter is, we're anything that happens to maintenance, and we're continuing to change tires, and those things anyway. Um, the buses really have a pretty long lifespan. The longest you can actually lease a bus in the state is five years anyway. And the price for using the five, or five years as opposed to two, saved you about four thousand dollars a year, which would pretty well cover your maintenance on the buses. So, we're recommending at this point that instead of two years lease, we can go with, uh, two years buses, but with five years.
Remind us at the end of the lease, can we do a question?
Why can't we get into the buses? There is an option to purchase the lease, so, as Sarah and otherwise will just.
And those two back? Any other questions?
My name is, we're financial, pretty much standard operating procedure. Right now, we are at that point in time where our revenues are pretty much larger than our expenditures, but the last, uh, second installment of the, actually, the first installment of last year's, and that's the last, the last tax, that seems to be here pretty much, so now, we're on the spending side of the side.
Board Finance Committee.
Earlier in the year, the board discussed, so interested in having a finance committee to do the hard, specific work on the budget, and to bring it to the board for action. So, we need to keep that in mind, we should make sure we brought it back, as we're starting our budget planning cycle. So, it's just a timely conversation, remember, set the budget down, take something in the fall, so we can be in order. So if we are going to start, now's the perfect time to adjust the finance committee.
Well, I know, you should volunteer, thank you. It would be awesome if we at least. That's involved, that's back here. Still this full year.
Just for the seventeen.
But it would be great, and I think extremely helpful, if we could at least get two volunteers.
Did you guys?
You know, although I know in twenty seventeen, you did say, you know, okay, being a solo committee, but it would be great if there was someone else, um, that I could, um, you know, provide another pair of eyes on this, especially given all that we have said as a board, that we want to do with the budget this year, and it's not a one-person job, so.
Yeah, I think the eyes are, the eyes are important, also the recommendations. The, the true nirvana of a board finance committee is that the hard work, hard discussions, tough decisions are made in the committee, and when that board package comes to the board, that's thoroughly vetted, and you can trust that the world of board can go through the process, and that you're approving a budget that matches your values, that matches your beliefs, that matches the decisions that you perform to make around school finance.
So maybe, um, I'll send out a heartfelt email. John was considering board, asking for someone to volunteer here, for the finance committee.
I'd walk back into the room.
A little bit.
Well, I forgot something.
Uh, we were just soliciting board members to volunteer, to help brand, finance committee, having another pair of eyes, given all that we want, we have said, and want to do with the budget this year, so that we have time for levy discussion, time to talk about, do we cut, or so aware that there's somewhere else that discussion's happening.
I'd be happy to help Fran, or whatever she wants.
Can you speak a little? There you go.
All right, great, thank you.
Now, I don't have to say that on my.
Let me look at my alphabet.
Actually, I don't write the alphabet, but it is your alphabet. Uh, next, I have a twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen S S B C representative.
Every year, um, through the intergovernmental cooperative agreement for the S S B C, the health insurance cooperative, the board has to reappoint who's going to be the representative of the district's cooperative. The last two years, I have been a representative, the superintendent has been altering it. Prior to that, I've been sixteen years to the same thing, Mr. One Twenty Four, so I would be perfectly fine to, yeah, to just have two people do it.
That would be great. You said that you did not want to do this anymore, we probably concerned, so thank you.
I've got a lot of, I've still, that's. Audit, audit. So, we have engagement letter collection. They are requesting a seven point eight percent increase, um, which is about, uh, it's a little bit over a month, they did last year, about even about October last year. They have not requested, um, an increase in the last four years, and actually, the year before that, they had decreased it, so the amount of the increase is still less than what we were paying five years ago for the same service. And we did make some calls around again. They are comparable with, um, the Gladrey R S M, um, but they are significantly still, significantly less than they until the N P S, are asking for N P's. So, I guess we would recommend to stay with, with, and issues of jobs, of damage, you know, pretty well marked.
Any discussion? I have a little space for me.
Okay, numbers are out. We had said about a hundred, we figured we would get final number one thirty-two, six, forty-four. That's how much we will be getting in addition to the minimum funding, but, or, money's put into the model. We are now collecting again all the data for next year, so this will continue every year, but, and we're at the seventy-fifth percentile on funding tiers, because a lot of districts who are on that median side than we are. So while we're still, you know, in, in one of those tiers of need, there's not a whole lot of.
This is a hundred and thirty-two actual, or is the budget just funded?
No, that's what's being distributed now, to the balance this year.
Let's go over to ask that question.
Right, S S B C health insurance rates.
Okay, this is a big one. Um, we have some sick people, so, we spent a long time looking at claims and rates, and doing it both by plan as well as co-op-wide. Co-op did approve rate increases at this last four years. The good news, if you will, is that since two thousand and seven, compared to industry trend, all of the plans are running under percentile increase compared to trend. The bad news is, the P P O will be going up thirteen point eight five percent this year. The H S A five, zero, four percent, and then two H M Ls, eleven point oh four percent. Right now, there are forty people who are driving forty-eight percent of the claims in the home, and there's about twenty-five hundred people covered, and forty of them are, uh, forty-eight percent of the claims. In the P P O, which is the worst, um, experience right now, thirty people are making up sixty-seven percent of the P P O's claims. When we look at the overall forty people, twenty-five percent of them are ours, so ten of the forty are going to be on the same. So, it's not like we're just, you know, funding other people's claims, next to the amount. So, that's kind of, that's really what's driving this. Of those forty, all of them have claims in excess of three thousand dollars, and some of them significantly higher, like one that's almost a million dollars, apparently, so. So, um, we're keeping track on it. We do have stock loss coverage. Once any individual hits a hundred and seventy thousand dollars or higher, the claims, then it's being covered by the stock loss here. That being said, since we have so many sick people, and so many, through stock loss, right now, we're looking at a, and we'll leave the last figure we were at, was the eighteen percent increase in the stock loss premium. So, that's also a claim to the additional, um, for the, so that's where we are at right now. It will translate to approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in premium for the board's. We're going to have this insurance committee, we need to, 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 so that means to.
Just sort of add this, I think the hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the board is, you know, what proportion of that is of this? You got eleven and thirteen and five percent increases.
So.
We covered half of it.
What our collective bargaining agreement says is that any increase in the premium, the board picks up half of the increase.
So the, um, the other half is picked up by this one.
Who are the other, um, folks in the, oh, the other districts?
The other districts are, uh, and the other districts are one oh four, Summit, one twenty-four, Erick Hart, one twenty-seven, uh, Worth, uh, one seventy-one, Sunny Grove, and the Arrow Cooperative, and the Ward County.
Any more questions? Prevaling weight?
The purchasing lock that we're part of requires us to pass the resolution, the documents evaluation, and then give them the best information that they will publish on behalf of the purchasing lock. Really, we use it for graphic paper, art paper, art supplies, those kinds of, uh, box parts, uh, the, um, all right, the lock was about, um, twenty districts, um, just trying to pile all of it together to get the best price for bottom purchases. This is just a resolution, they ask us to pass it.
Any questions?
Really, no, nothing to do with graphic paper though?
No, fuck it.
Summer non-ded projects.
Scott, I'll do this one.
Sure. I'll give you a break. Do your breaks. Aside of, uh, I'll get a construction that's going on, I don't know what you would like to do, reading, uh, other small projects. Uh, it includes, um, Sealscope, and recently, uh, Frenker, and Western, and here at Harmony. Also, our lunch table and bench repaired, and all of our schools, kind of necessary, there's a lot of safety features on these equipment, uh, from falling, that's a problem. Ease of coming down, ease of going up with electronics. And then also, if you remember, in the last three summers, we upgraded our, uh, vertical lines at all of our schools, with mud chains. With the construction that's going on at Heather, makes sense to, uh, Heather this summer, the West Avenue, um, next summer. Looked in, are listed for a total of, that would be forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two hours and twenty-six cents for all three projects. Any questions about any of those? I'll be completed yourself, before, before school starts.
I have a question. So, the lunch table, that feels like I should do something that probably happens, I mean, did we talk about this last time?
I do do it every summer.
Right, because it's, it's so much used, and.
It gets used. Four times a day, they're up and down, up and down, a lot of times, my guys only have a couple of minutes, and make that happen before gym starts again, or starts again, so, I think it'd be.
Seven, will you?
Any other questions? Okay, so, can I please have a motion to approve an additional twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, and forty percent above the contingency allowance to order and install additional hardware to complete the lock installation project?
Absolutely.
Paretes, is part of the, any discussion? Roll call please. Okay, Paretes?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Grace? Yes. Blackman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Home.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Motion has passed. Can I please have a motion to approve the honorable dismissal resolution at present
Second.
Any, uh, any discussion?
One question, and, the first step.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call please. Hey, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Paretes?
Yes.
Ford? Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I please have a motion to approve the first reading of policy five, one point? So, second. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call please. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paretes?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Ford? Yes, and the motion has passed. And now moves executive session, matter relates personnel, five I L C F, one twenty, F two, I need a motion to release move executive session. Second. Second, I'll pay what I got. What's your name?
So there's no action to take after, sort of, executive session, so we can straight to the same issue tomorrow.